Four, three, two. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified Schools District Regular Board of Education, Regular Meeting for the Board of Education. Today is February eighth and it is 5:09 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order into session. And Mr. Ellis, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
May I? Your right hand over your heart. Begin. The flag will be lifted. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please go.
May I have an approval for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second it.
Thank you. The motion was moved by Noah Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. Dr. Bregy, would you like to report anything from open session and enclosed session?
Yes. In closed session this evening, the board took action to notify the temporary certificated employees identified by employee numbers EU1574895, KV4958748, NV2462426, SG7596559, that the employees will be released from the temporary contract effective June third, two thousand twenty-two, and not reelected for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and directed by the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The eyes was five to zero. Eyes were Mr. Margot, Mrs. Marcus, Mrs. Wells, Dr. Stern, and Mr. Halimi.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy. Next, I would like to introduce Dr. Skon, who's our BVMS Principal, and she will be introducing the BVMS PBIS program. Welcome, Dr. Skon.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for letting us be here tonight. We just want to share a few highlights about our school culture and how we focus on our four core values and goal setting for our students. So tonight I have Assistant Principal Joe Little with me, who oversees our school culture, PBIS, student activities, all the fun stuff on our campus. And then I have Laura Rogers, one of our teachers, who helps us with some of our kiddos that need the daily check-ins and check-outs. And then our PBIS Coordinator, Coach Park, who is our school spirit champion. So they're going to share a little bit with us tonight. So Joe's going to go ahead and go first.
Well, good evening, everybody. First thing I want to talk about is our, you know, our core values, which are coming up on the screen as we speak. So BVMS has created what's referred to as an expected school-wide learning result or an ESLR. And these are the core values that we want all of our students to leave our BVMS by the time they are done with us for our three years. So ideally, our students are building resilience, their value learning, they're making connections, and they're showing integrity towards one another. And the idea of PBIS is really is to really start focusing your energy on students who are doing the right thing every single day. So for example, we pass out these four core tickets to our students that, and anytime a student displays one of our core values, whether it's administrator sees it, a teacher sees it, a security guard sees it, they will be handed a ticket. And students can turn in these tickets throughout every single day to our PBIS box. And on Thursday, we hold a raffle for students to win various prizes. Prizes could include, you know, lunch from Beverly Drive. It could include BVMS school gear, can include candy. And then on top of that, students can also save their tickets and just buy prizes directly. So for example, Sour Patch Kids is a popular item the kids buy, hair heads. We've sold pencils, we've sold school gear. And so every Thursday, the students come and they, and we have a routine, as you see here in the picture, and they are able to purchase things for doing the right thing at school every single day. On top of that, you know, PBIS, another thing that we have done is we look at trends at the school that maybe need fixing, or where our kids are maybe struggling with in areas. Instead of taking a disciplined approach to fixing the issue, we try and take a more positive approach and reward kids that do the right thing every single day. For example, tardies. We were having some issues with students not coming to class on time. And so the first thing we did was we wanted to celebrate every single student at BVMS that has come to school on time every single day and to class on time every single day. So as you see here in the picture, we had a nice little ice cream party for about one hundred and sixty students, about a third of the school, that have been on time every single day, and we celebrated them. The next thing that we did was closing out between, right after Thanksgiving break up until December, we went on holiday, we had a tardy competition between the grade levels. So every single day, we would track how many tardies were happening per grade level. We would let the students know where they were in the standings. And through that, we actually reduced our tardies from, you know, the second class of the day to the end of the class today by over seventy percent. And so not, we didn't have to give anyone detention, we didn't have to, you know, go down the discipline route. Instead, we just showed, we had a competition between the grade levels, the students responded, and the teachers and ourselves saw a huge difference in the amount of tardies we were seeing every single day. And again, we didn't have to go down the discipline route to change the behavior. And even to this day now in January, you know, we don't have, we don't, we're not seeing a lot of tardies for our kids because we corrected the behavior, they know how to get to class on time. And again, we did it through a positive lens because most kids do the right thing every single day. And it was really, really effective in terms of improving our culture without necessarily having to go down a route of detention and things like that. Next, I want to introduce Laura Rogers, who will be focusing on the check-in, check-out students that we work with.
Hi, everyone. We've been using a check-in, check-out system for some of our students. In particular, we, we've been working very closely with one of our kiddos who really, really, really struggled with classroom behavior. And he gave us some great feedback on the checking in. He checks out with Dr. Skon every day and works very closely with me and his teachers. And the result of checking in and checking out and having set some very clear goals for himself moving forward, areas for improvement, he's been able to reflect on his behavior. He recognizes that he has a team behind him, in fact, a family that are really working hard to help him be successful. And so it's become a very symbiotic relationship. He's advocating for himself more confidently, and he's, he's, he's a really trustworthy kiddo. He's, he's somebody that can be relied upon to do the right thing. It's been a really effective strategy for him.
And then next, thank you, Ms. Rogers, is Coach Park, who's gonna kind of just end on overall teacher perspective for our PBIS and school culture.
Hi, everybody. It's Coach Park. So you know me, and if you don't, I love Bulldog Nation, and I'm so excited to be here and talk to you about it. My role here at Beverly Vista is that of PE teacher, athletic director, a lot of other things. And I just want to say, in thirty-three years of my teaching career, I am more fired up, more excited, more just ready to rock and roll. I love Beverly Vista. I love Bulldog Nation, love what we're building here, and I'm all in. So just want to chat with you and share with you kind of what is going on at our school. I see about a hundred and eighty kids through my PE classes, and I've seen some really great dynamics there. The kids are really happy not to be sitting in front of a Zoom call, especially trying to do PE on Zoom. But just the kids being at school has been so refreshing and to see them interacting with one another. So just all of that, being on campus, being at Beverly Vista is a victory. And then as far as our athletics program is going, we were able this fall to host three flag football teams, three girls volleyball teams, an outstanding co-ed cross-country team, and our first ever sixth, seventh, and eighth grade cheer squad. Our winter program in athletics got delayed by two weeks with the COVID surge, but thank goodness, we were able to get that started. And we're currently participating in four different basketball teams, with four different basketball teams, our winter cheer squad. And very shortly, we'll be getting ready for tryouts and that kind of thing for our spring season, which Beverly Vista Middle School has never had because it got shut down by COVID two years ago. So we're super excited about what's going to happen in the spring with our boys and girls soccer teams, boys volleyball, track and field, and our spring cheer squad. So, you know, we've got that going on. We've got choir, drama, theater, you know, all of that stuff in the visual performing arts, our band, our orchestra. We have our two program, which is tobacco use prevention education. Our seventh graders are in the middle of a three-year grant where they're learning about anti-vaping and really to make some good healthy choices when it comes to being, you know, in, just looked at with the vaping stuff. It's out there, but our kids are going to make great choices because they're going to be educated. And then really, obviously, the four core values that we created for Beverly Vista, I love what's going on at this campus. So I want to say, thanks to the administration, we've got counselors, office staff, health people, we've got custodians, security people. I wear a walkie-talkie cafeteria. They will meet, mix, and mingle with any kid before, during, or after school. So everybody's a piece of the puzzle right now, building our school and building Bulldog Nation. And I just love being a part of that. And as far as our four core values, we are building resilience in our kids. We're going to equip them so that they can handle winning and losing, and they can handle time management, and they can learn to use resources instead of always asking mom and dad, well, when is this and when is that? No, we're going to train them. This is training ground for them. And then as far as they're valuing learning, we just really want them to establish habits, academic habits. Can they be a student athlete? Can they be a student and still be in the theater musical after school? And just learning all of those time management skills, we want them to establish really good habits here at Beverly Vista. And then we want, as far as making connections, engaging our kids, and this is where we're awesome, I'm just putting it out there. We've got clubs, we've got teams, we've got it, you know, the visual and performing arts, we've got pep rallies, I think we're having three this year. We have College Wear Day on Thursday, we have Bulldog Wear on Friday, we have Jersey Days, Go Rams for the Super Bowl. And I'm just so excited because the kids, it's building this culture, you know, and it's kind of like getting the train out of the station, but the train is getting out of the station, and it's very exciting. The momentum's going to be there, and I know it, and I believe it. And then as far as our last core value, showing integrity, we just want to empower the kids. Your word is your word. If you say you're going to be somewhere and you commit to it, be there. And, you know, do that with your classwork. If you say you're going to get something done, get it done. And so I feel like our entire staff at Beverly Vista, we are working as a team, and the administrative team that we have in place right now, amazing, just absolutely amazing. And so I just want to say thank you to all of you on the board. I want to say thank you to the PTA, the BHF, our admin, everybody who works at Beverly Vista, our families that are contributing financially to Beverly Vista. Your support is so appreciated, but, you know, just big vision, we're going to build a bridge between Bulldog Nation and Norman Nation. And so Beverly Hills High School, watch out, because we're going to start sending you amazing middle schoolers, and they're going to be ready for high school. And I love it. And that's my teacher's perspective, and I could just rant and rave and go on forever, but it's a meeting. So thank you, and I love Bulldog Nation. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Coach Park, and Ms. Rogers, and Mr. Little. As you can see, our four core values are just embedded in everything that we do here at Beverly Vista Middle School. So thank you for the opportunity to share and for your support in this valuable program and our campus.
Thank you so much. It's really wonderful to hear all of these programs. And yes, let's give a big hand to everybody. I'd like to go around so everyone has a chance to comment. So Mr. Raymer?
Thank you very much for stopping by today. I know PBIS is a great program at the high school, and it's fantastic to see that those same and very similar core values are being implemented at the middle school with a passion never before seen. Thank you very much, Coach Park, for that. Coach Park was my PE teacher throughout middle school, so I've known her for quite a long time. So it's fantastic to see her still working with that same passion that she's always had. So thank you all for that.
Mrs. Marcus?
Thank you for sharing with us. It was really a wonderful presentation, and I'd just like to make a couple comments. I have never, been so impressed by what PBS has been, PBIS has been able to do in making such a difference in the school itself. There seems to be no limit to the ideas that you can come up with to get these kids to have such a wonderful feeling for the school and how the students respond. Coach Park made a comment about something that I had written here, and that had to do with the pathways that these kids at the middle school are going to have going into the high school. And you made the comment, watch out, high school, here they come. It's amazing. I'm sure that the level of talent that's going to come up is going to make a lot of difference in the program when they get there also. So again, thank you for your wonderful presentation, and thank you for doing all you're doing, and keep it up because it is working. And thank you.
I'm probably not going to say anything that my fellow board members haven't already said, just, I love the pride. Coach Park, I love your energy. Amazing. I'm sure it's contagious to all the kids. Thank you, guys, for everything you're doing.
I certainly agree with my colleagues, and I just have to say, without a doubt, I really feel that BVMS is thriving. I, I am on every level, I'm so thrilled that, that we have such a viable, wonderful, enriching middle school. And I know that there were growing pains early on when, when it was first turned into the middle school, but I am so impressed. And Coach Park, I love seeing the enthusiasm and the longevity of over thirty years of your talent. So thank you, and thank you, Dr. Skon, and Dr., Mr. Little, and everyone who gave us our presentation tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Margot?
When, when I dove in to be the deciding vote on making a middle school happen, it was kind of fingers crossed. I have since released those fingers. It has been stewarded by terrific administrators and staff and students who are making this, what was a dream, a reality. And, and Coach Park, your enthusiasm is infectious. During COVID, over Zoom, and, and myself confined at the moment, I'm still bouncing inside. So thank you for bringing it all the time. It's sorely needed during these days.
Thank you, Noah. I'd like to also just agree, I think that the BVMS Middle School is such a huge success, and the culture of that community is just testament to how successful that, that the middle school is, has been and is doing. So thank you very much for taking the time and being here tonight and letting us share in that.
Again, just some quick thank you. So I didn't have any fingers crossed with the middle school, and was, was full steam ahead for the last five years, but so proud of you. And, you know, middle school philosophy is really, you know, it's the kind of thing that the more you put into it, the more you get out of it, and that's And that's exactly what that culture consistently does, time after time again, despite what the challenges are. So thank you for that. Thank you for the keeping up with the initiative with our PBIS program because that's super exciting to see. And just thank you for being here tonight, being part of our spotlight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is accommodations and recognition. And tonight, we would like to recognize the 711 Committee members for their outstanding work and dedication to our school community. I'd like to call out Mr. Peter Ostroff, Ms. Colleen Nurr, Mr. Dick Schreiber, Mr. Jonathan Swerdlo, and Mr. Matthew Niemann, and Ms. Ronit Stone.
President Wells, members of the board, I just want to take this opportunity to say what a great committee this has been working with. This process actually started two years ago when the board directed staff to bring this committee together. We had countless meetings. We had some tours. We reviewed real property. We wrote reports for the board, presented to the board. And the culmination of all this work actually was some waivers that we filed with the state of California back in the fall. And those waivers give the board a little more flexibility to work with real property. And those waivers were actually granted this past January. So all the hard work of the 711 Committee came to fruition. And I'm just honored to be here with them. And if you guys want to unmute yourself and just say a word or two, that would be great. Thanks.
Let's start with Mr. Peter Ostroff.
Thank you. I just want to say that it's just been our privilege to be able to help. And we're very glad that we had the opportunity and are much appreciative of your giving us that opportunity. And hopefully, what we have given you will be something that you can work with constructively and productively.
Thank you, Peter. And the next person would be Ms. Colleen Nurr.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. I enjoyed the process. I enjoyed getting to know my committee people. I felt that we were all very professional in examining and coming up with what we felt were workable options for the properties. And it was a privilege to be part of the committee.
Thank you, Colleen. Next, we'll hear from Dick Schreiber.
It's nice to be here. I've enjoyed working with our chairman, Peter Ostroff, and many members of the faculty who were very helpful with their inputs. And I think we've added value and I'd really happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Dick. Next, we'll hear from Jonathan Swerdlo.
I thought Peter said that we all were trying to serve the community, do the best we can. And I thought everyone worked very hard and Peter worked the hardest.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Matthew Niemann.
I don't think Matt's with us tonight.
Okay, I think Matthew was unable to be with us this evening. So the next person we'll hear from is Ronit Stone.
It's a pleasure to have a reason to come back and serve the district. It was fun and a great project during COVID. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ronit. I mean, I would really just like to say, what's really astounding to me over and over again is the unbelievable rich resources that we have in our community and the dedication of all of our community members in the city of Beverly Hills. We're so fortunate to have such great resources and people who are willing to volunteer their time, dedicate their expertise, their wisdom to all for the betterment of our school. So I really would like to thank you. And I'd also like to go around and let everybody else have an opportunity as well. So Mr. Raymer?
Thank you very much for giving some of your own time to assist the district in this way. We definitely very much appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Raymer's comments and just tell you how proud and how glad I was that you were able to participate and give of your time as volunteers. We often don't think about the fact that we have such wonderful people in our community. And once we find them, we like to keep them. So I hope that we can call on you again sometime because you are an outstanding group. So thank you.
To just reiterate what my colleagues have already said again, I mean, I'm so glad we have the resources we have. And thank you all for stepping up. I can't wait to take the work that you guys have done and really make it actionable. It's great news that the waivers were approved so now we can really move ahead. So thank you guys for laying the foundation.
Yes, thank you all for your service, your service of wisdom, of work ethic, giving freely of your time. And I'm sure that, you know, your commitment and your contributions to the 711 Committee will be a lasting legacy. Thank you.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you to all of you, but I also want to thank the previous board, Dr. Bregge and Wade because we have been asking for a 711 Committee report for a very long time. None of you were here when the first time it was asked, but now we have one. And part of it is beside the committee's wonderful work, it's the administration's wonderful work that saw it through and made it happen. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Noah. I agree. I think Wade and all of the staff that has provided so much support to this group to come up with these really creative solutions. It's been a really great effort and really wonderful for me to watch. Dr. Bregge?
Just want to add my thanks as well. It was, you know, I want to echo what Colleen said because I think it's really important. Like this was a really fun group. Like this was a very innovative group, a hardworking group. And as Mr. Margot pointed out, you know, we had a couple of assemblies of a 711 group in the past. But to go all the way to this point and actually finish the work and the recommendations has not taken place. So this is a very big victory for our school district. But also the conversations that we had, the work along the way have sparked many things in our strategic plan. Some of the things I'm actually going to talk about tonight with early childhood. So you added a lot more to our school district than just the work with the 711 Committee. A lot of other programming issues came up along the way and really helped spark kind of a new direction for us. So thank you.
Did you have anything else to add, Wade?
No, just that now that we've got our waiver, the committee has... Us as the administration and the board to take that waiver and do something with it. So we will be coming back to the board to talk about a feasibility study for some of these properties. So just to let you know, this is just the first step.
Right. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I'd like to acknowledge Wade's contribution. He kept us going forward and he was a wonderful resource all the way through.
Thank you very much, Colleen. Wade, are you going to stay up there for the Kejent presentation to introduce? That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
President Wells, members of the board, tonight we have a short presentation from Chet Wang from Kejent regarding a possible future bond issuance on Measure BH. Is Mr. Wang there?
I'm here. Good evening.
Great. So I think Ms. Starkin's going to allow you to share your screen.
Can everyone see the cover page of the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'll get started. Good evening, President Wells, members of the board, Dr. Bregge. We've been working very closely with district staff as to its upcoming project needs. So tonight's presentation is a snapshot of the current Measure BH general obligation bonds, what the district's current needs are, and what potential issuance scenarios look like and considerations. Tonight's presentation is for information only. If we do proceed, there will be a future action item at a future board meeting date. So just as a backdrop, some of the factors that we'll look at are, what are the district's funding needs? The scope, the cost, the timing relative to how do we raise funds to meet those needs? And as you know, taxes are levied against the district's assessed valuation and bonds are issued in accordance to tax rates, pledges, and legal parameters. So we'll look at each of these variables in a bit more detail. As far as the district project needs go, we've been working very closely with Mr. Roach on the district's future needs. So we've just summarized them here by the various purposes of the future needs relative to each of the subsequent fiscal years. The IRS generally requires that when you issue tax-exempt bonds, you have to spend 85% of the proceeds within a three-year timeframe. The district currently has $225 million of Measure BH authorization remaining. So just to cut to the chase here, in fiscal '22, the projected expenditure, future expenditures are about $67 million, $130 million in the 2023 fiscal year, $109 million in '24, and $87 million in '25. So one of the main takeaways on this slide is, come the third fiscal year, the district would be able to have a need exceeding the $225 million. So I think we can check the box that there is a reasonable expectation that the district could spend 85% of the remaining Measure BH authorization. Now we'll look at the financing constraints. The first is the district's assessed value. And just as a recap, this is the value of all taxable property within district boundaries, residential and commercial primarily. The district's most recent data point has your assessed valuation just north of $40 billion. And that's a 4.1% growth over the previous fiscal year. The district's annualized averages over the 2025-35 year is very, very strong, ranging from 5 to almost 6.5%. So very strong historic and pretty consistent growth over the timeframe going back to 1984. Interest rates, as you are aware, are going up. We did hit a very low period following the pandemic as a result of some pretty aggressive action from the central banks, dropping the Fed funds rate, pumping stimulus dollars. Since the beginning of the pandemic, interest rates have risen on inflationary pressures, on the Fed unwinding their bond purchasing program, plans to increase the interest rates as soon as the upcoming March meeting. So rates have been increasing, but historically are still fairly low, going back 5, 10, 20, 30 years. The district internally does always secure a very strong cost of borrowing. This is Beverly Hills Unified School District. And your current credit ratings are one notch below the AAA ratings from both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. And these were most recently updated as of the beginning of calendar year 2021. Your credit ratings are a function of four major factors, district finances, district management policies and procedures, your debt and pension profile, and also the local economy in greater LA base as well. So very strong checkmarks on each of the credit rating criteria. So now we'll look at Measure BH. So just as a recap, voters approved $385 million of bonds in June of 2018. The minimum requirement was a 55% voter approval. You achieved just shy of 61%. And voters were represented a tax rate of $44 per 100,000, which was below the legal limit of $60 per bond measure. We did assist the district in issuing $160 million as the first tranche of bonds. And this leaves $225 million, all of which could be accessed if the district chose to do so. So this is what the current tax rate looks like. Here's our $44 voter estimate. The first issuance of bonds, we initially dropped the tax rate intentionally to leave room for the remaining Measure BH bonds to fill in the tax rate. So we're both below the $44 and below the $60 legal limit. Some IRS rules here, the IRS says you have to issue 85% or spend 85% of your bonds within a three-year timeframe. That's the three-year expenditure rule. The IRS also allows what's called a five-year rule, which is to meet various benchmarks within a one, two, three, and five-year timeframe. We do see some districts that have a longer spend-down timeline utilize the five-year rule. It does require a certification from an architect or engineer. And then the other option is something we also see districts taking advantage of, which is rather than issuing tax-exempt bonds, issuing taxable bonds, which do come at a higher cost of borrowing but have no spend-on requirement. So not saying you would do it, but you could issue the bonds and not spend them for 10 years and you would have no arbitrage issues from the IRS. Now, what are the differences between tax-exempt and taxable rates? We've got an illustration here where the orange represents tax-exempt. And as you would expect, each and every year, taxable rates are higher than tax-exempt rates. On average, it's currently about 0.6% of a higher interest rate differential. And you'll see what that does relative to a $225 million authorization, or remaining authorization. So if we looked at the $225 million, we're making a few assumptions. First is your assessed valuation growth. Notwithstanding that you've historically averaged 5% to 6% over a 20- or 30-year timeframe, we're going to ratchet that down to be more conservative. So assuming 1% next year, 2%, and then capping out at 4%. If you were to issue all $225 million at the tax-exempt rate, your all-in borrowing cost would be about 2.6%, which is a very low cost of borrowing for a 23-year financing. Your total debt service, which is principal and interest, would be $310 million. And debt service divided by principal is a repayment ratio. The state has a legal limit that no school district can issue bonds over a 4:1 repayment ratio. So you are far below that under tax-exempt rates, currently at about 1.38 to 1. We would require a total tax rate of $39. That is below the $44 estimate and far below the $60 legal limit. I'm going to jump to scenario three. If the district issued all $225 million as taxable bonds, that would incur a higher interest cost of 3.2%. Our debt service would increase to $334 million, but again, still be relatively cost-effective in consideration of the 4:1 legal limit. And also, our tax rate would be about $41.50, also below $44. Another option that we've been looking at is splitting the difference. So what if the district issued, say, $115 million as tax-exempt, $110 million as taxable in a 50-50 split? As you can imagine, the borrowing cost is smack in between the $2.6 and the $3.2 million, and also the tax rate estimate and the repayment ratios in between the two bookend scenarios. So visually, what the tax rate would look like is the $225 million would be represented by the blue bars. So whether it's tax-exempt, taxable, or a combination of both, the district would be comfortably below the $44 tax rate estimate at very conservative assessed valuation growth rates, far below the district's historical rates. This last slide is a timeline. So we've had a few meetings with the district's finance committee to discuss not only the remaining issuance, but also the project needs, what the mix of taxable versus tax-exempt looks like. In issuing bonds, we would require future board approval. And what we've illustrated here is potentially coming back to the board, February 22nd. We would work very closely with Dr. Bregge and Mr. Roach on updating the district's very strong credit ratings. And then if the board does approve, that moving forward with the issuance, bonds could be sold by mid to late March with dollars in the bank for projects come the middle of April. And I think what's important, just to reiterate, is this presentation is for information. The mix between taxable and tax-exempt is not a determination that would have to be made tonight or come February 22nd. It's something that we could assess closer to the sale of the bonds, which would happen around mid to late March. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Roach, and welcome any questions.
Thank you, Chet. So this is the time for the board to ask any questions about the potential issuance. And then we'll probably, with the board's head nod, we'll bring another item to the board on the 22nd for an actual issuance. So I'm here to answer any questions, or I'll probably turn them over to Chet if they're too complicated.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation. Eli, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. I've just got a quick question. So the, please correct me if I'm wrong, because this is definitely not my area of expertise, although I was pretty happy to see I was understanding some things you were saying about the Fed. It's showing our educational program. It has some real-world value. But just for the, so the benefit of the taxable bonds is that we're able to hold them for an indefinite amount of time?
That's correct. So if there are any delays, as I understand, there are some potentially large projects on certain of the district sites. So if there were delays at DSA or any changes in the expectations today, four years from now, if you were to expend the dollars, if that was the taxable portion, you would not be subject to any arbitrage rebate back to the IRS.
Thank you. And then, just for my own clarification, for if we were to hold tax-exempt bonds for longer than the specified period, what would be some repercussions that we face?
So let's say that you issued a borrowing cost of 2.6%. Currently, short-term rates are fairly low, so you're not earning anything in excess of 2.6%. But there was a period of time where the LA County Treasury pool was earning 4% or 5%. Any earnings in excess would be considered arbitrage, and those would be rebated back to, or returned back to the IRS.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you again for that very clear and very understandably explained presentation. And Mr. Raymer, I saw it once before, and I still got more out of it this time than I did the first time. So I really, I just wanted to know one thing. When we bought the 160 million, or when we put out the 160 million, the first issuance of the BH, was that all non-taxable?
That's correct. Those were issued entirely as tax-exempt bonds.
And so we don't have, I don't think there's going to be any problem in probably seeing that, that those being spent as because of what we're, how fast we've been moving. So I, I don't know. I guess we'll have to wait to see what we presented in the next few weeks as to what decision we have to make. But like you said, that decision does not have to be made until the time we go out to sell the bonds. So we would even have a clearer picture, perhaps, of our situation than we do maybe tonight.
That's right. And if I may, just give a historical perspective, that $160 million was issued in June of 2019 entirely tax-exempt. And that all-inclusive borrowing cost was about 3% for a fully taxable bond. So even though rates are up today or over the last few months, fully tax-exempt bonds are lower than when the first series of bonds were issued back in 2019.
Thank you. Thank you again for a very clear explanation.
Thank you for the presentation. Some pretty quick questions. I think these are obvious, but just want to make sure I understand. If we go to page four for a second, the assessed value of the $40 billion, what is that, what is that based on? Like, how do we calculate the assessed value of the district?
That's a, that's a great question. So that is calculated by the county assessor's office. So every individual property has its own assessed valuation, which is different from the market value. So you might have some residents that have been in their homes since 1970. And even if their market value were something like $2 million, because they've been in their home for so long, under Proposition 13, on an annual basis, your assessed valuation can go up no more than 2% a year. So they could have an assessed valuation of $200,000. So their taxes would be based on the land and improvements of the value at the time that the assessor assessed their property. And again, going up no more than 2% every single year. So anytime a property changes hands, that property would rebench to whatever the sale price is, and that becomes the new assessed valuation of the property.
Right. That was a question. Thank you for clarifying that. And now, once the Measure BH was approved, we decided to do it in two tranches, right? So there's no further approval that's needed by voters. It's just this, this board that gets to decide when we issue the rest of the bonds, correct?
That's correct.
Thanks. And given the fact that we have, I guess, I guess this is more a question for Wayne. It's a business question. I mean, if, but to the extent that we're continuing with the program, nothing is slowing down, there would be no reason not to do the three-year, correct? Like, I mean, could you see any situation where we wouldn't want to do the three-year program?
There could be a situation where towards the end of the projects, there may not be enough money in the bank. You have $225 million issuance to finish those projects. So the board may want to find another source of revenue that may delay the process for a little while. So there is a chance that we could need some more time at the end of the project.
So you may want to keep some of the money in the bank and stop the program at a natural time if we didn't have the money to finish, and then you would extend it further. That makes sense. Thanks, Wayne. I'd like to thank you.
Dr. Stern?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I enjoyed that presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Question for both of you, but, and it alludes to what Gabe said, is that we need to take, we need to have a little snapshot of the cash flow with the remaining schedule for the construction. Because I, you know, we're hearing anywhere three to five years to finish everything. But if we're selling something tax-exempt that's going to be a three-year spend-down, then we're going to have an issue, right? So, oh, thank you for putting that up. Give me a second. I'm just digesting this. Well, I guess, was this cash flow worked in conjunction with the construction team? Are they providing the schedule on this?
Yes. So we work very closely with TCBS and their team, Pam Johnson, her team, to come up with these numbers.
Okay. So from what I could see here, I, you know, I see a complete spend-down that correlates with the projects. Okay. All right. Because I was thinking of what Gabe was saying, and if we need to perhaps break, if there's any, if there's any decision, I think Rochelle alluded this too, if there's any decision by the board to bifurcate or do anything with the remaining projects, we may need to do that with the issuance. Correct?
That would be, that would be correct. That would be an option for the board to look at.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chet.
I think that my take on this is that we have a lot of really great options right now because interest rates are so low. So when we look at the difference between taxable and the non-taxable, there's very small percent difference, and we get a lot of, we get a lot of flexibility there. And I think that's also one of the things that the finance committee has been discussing with Keijen to talk about what that balance is between taxable and non-taxable in terms of issuing, because it gives us more flexibility, and it's for very little cost. And we're, we are fortunate to be in Beverly Hills and have the assessed values that we have. And even with the conservative assessed value growth rate, we, we have a very, we're in a very good place right now to be able to have options. And I would really defer to the finance committee for what their recommendation would be with you, Wade, as well as with Keijen.
President Wells, I'm sorry, one more question. Wade, has the finance committee made an official recommendation on this yet?
They have. They want to provide the $225 million. They could benefit at the lower tax rate.
Okay.
Look at what we need from March. For non-taxable. But they really strongly suggest we take it right up to the current market and issue $225 million.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the only, I guess it would be great to get the, the device of, I don't know if it's appropriate for the finance committee to do this or the administration, on like what different scenarios would look like based on, you know, we draw down the full amount, but if we did the three-year plan, like, how would we plan to spend the money? Because we can't guarantee that there's going to be another, you know, bond. We have, it looks like a pretty significant shortfall here if we wanted to go through and do all the... If we wanted to go through the full three years through the fiscal year end, 2025, it looks like we need almost $400 million. So, so I guess to your point, Wade, how, how we would actually spend that with the money we have, it would be great if we could look at a few different scenarios over the next month or two on how we would spend that. I'm sure we'll be doing that. Thank you.
Yeah, Gabe, to your point, that's why I brought up possibly breaking the, breaking this one into two tranches, so we can continue the existing construction and then plan the future construction with a solution to any shortfall. And then we would know. So I think we're thinking along the same lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Makes sense.
Well, I think we want to also make certain that we take advantage of the low tax rates that we have right now, so that we get, we don't want to lose the borrowing rate. And there's such a small difference between, you know, 2.6 versus 2.9. And my advice would be that we don't lose that opportunity, so keeping our eyes on that.
Wholeheartedly agree.
So that begs the question, if we were to go out for the entire amount...
And then we wind up changing course for any reason, and we won't be spending down the money, what, what is the result? I heard something about the IRS or...
Well, I think it's the, I think it's, I'm not the one to answer, actually, but you have, it's your time, how much time you have to use those funds.
Marco, that's a great question. That's why we would look at part of this issuance being taxable, so that you have that flexibility yet. That's, that's the instrument that you would use for that flexibility.
Okay. Fabulous. That's, that answers my concern. Thank you.
Perfect. But thank you.
Anyone have any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for taking the time to do this presentation for us. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing period and our public comment. I just would like to welcome everybody that's taken the time to be here tonight to provide their public comment. And I, from seeing some of the topics that I know that we're going to hear from, from all of our community members, I would like to also let you know that this evening we are going to be talking about the COVID policies and masking. And just wanted to let you know that as we start our public comment this evening. And the first person that we're going to hear from tonight is Parisa Levadon. And also, I'm sorry, I'd like to remind you, it's three minutes.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Parisa Levy Adine. I practice as a licensed psychologist in Beverly Hills, and I have a kindergarten, kindergarten in the district. I am making a comment because I'm saddened that the children of the Beverly Hills Schools District are suffering physically, socially, emotionally, and mentally as a result of this ongoing testing and masking. Although it was initially necessary to ensure their safety and health, and I'm very grateful for all that the district has done, it is now no longer medically necessary. Our children are anxious, depressed, and demoralized. These mandates have stripped them of their childhood, health, and well-being. There's a dramatic increase of anxiety, bullying, suicide attempts, and addiction that I've been seeing in my office since the reopening of our schools. Our children are... Students are afraid to take a deep breath in the bathroom stall since there may be cameras watching them. They're afraid to raise their hand in an indoor PE class to take a breathing break. It is becoming a fearful generation rather than a confident one. It is well-known that wearing a mask may cause breathing problems, hypoxia and hypercampia. This situation will become more serious with the time of wearing a mask. So the longer you wear the mask, the higher your risk. As we know, prolonged wearing may cause permanent damage to the respiratory system. KF94s, similar to N95s, are also detrimental when they're worn for long periods of time. Due to the lack of oxygen in the brain, it also damages our nervous system, causing adverse physiological reactions such as dizziness, chest tightness, and psychological reactions like anxiety and depression. There have been experiments done on the amount of carbon dioxide that is inhaled in the air with or without face masks in healthy children. They have found that the dead space volume of the masks collects exhaled carbon dioxide quickly after a short time. This carbon dioxide mixes with fresh air and elevates the carbon dioxide content of the inhaled air under the mask. And this was even more pronounced in studies for younger children. This leads to impairments attributable to hypercampia, which suggests that children should not be forced to wear face masks. What's hypercampia? It's a buildup of carbon dioxide in your bloodstream. It affects the respiratory system and the kidneys, the inflamed airways, and the lung tees are free to breathe and the oxygen need. So it changes the pH balance of your blood, making it too acidic. And as we all know, high acidity levels causes more physical well-being.
Parisa, sorry to interrupt you. It's been three minutes. But thank you very much for taking the time to make your comments. The next person we'll hear from is from Deborah Saya. And Deborah, I'd like to remind you that you have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So last week, I was picking up my son from baseball, and I needed to take my 10-year-old daughter to the bathroom. And honestly, I was shocked and disappointed to find that in our high school, we don't have soap, we don't have paper towels, we don't have toilet paper. The bathroom smells like a urinal. It's just disgusting. And the most concerning problem is that you are aware of this, and nothing has been done. I'm curious to know if anybody here would use those bathrooms. And probably for a good reason, no. And so I'd like to know why it's okay for our kids to be put in a position where they're unable to wash their hands after they use the bathroom. It's unacceptable. After all, they are the consumers here. And in what other employment opportunity would this be acceptable? So I'm happy to know that we have a good credit score. That's wonderful. But I wonder what our score is when it comes to the health and safety of our kids. And what kind of score you would get to, as a manager of this school and campus. Okay? And if, it seems like you guys have a lot of work to do. And if that's the case, I'm very grateful for you. And please, maybe stop taking on other projects like our health and other safety areas when we don't have soap in the school. areas when we don't have soap in the school, school bathrooms. And so. That's all I'd like to say today, but it is something that needs to be addressed. And I hope that you can take it seriously and hear us when we say that we don't want to wear, we don't want our kids wearing masks anymore. I don't, we don't find that that's being helpful. We need to really get down to the basics and make sure that our school is clean and sanitary for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deborah. The next person that we're going to hear from is Ritu Ram. And Ritu, you have three minutes.
Second. So first of all, I'd like to just let you guys all know that I have a daughter that's six years old and she attends Horace Mann Elementary School. And as for, you know, for the past 20 months now, it's been so difficult for these young children to be going to school masked where they couldn't be able to see the expressions of their teachers' faces, or be able to see smiles, or if somebody was feeling down or emotional, to be able to see their friend's face, or even to be able to hear their, their teacher's voice clearly when they were barely learning to read in kindergarten or first grade. So it's really put a very, you know, very difficult time for our children. And I think now, if anything, is the best time for us to start unmasking our children. Our children need to see the faces of their teachers, their friends. And we now know scientifically speaking that COVID is no longer what it was, what was once presented as, as a very life-threatening disease. This is a disease that it works very similar, similar to flu, the flu-like symptoms. And we all know this. And I'm pretty sure that 90% or more of us have now had COVID in the last, especially with the Omicron variant, which is the most contagious variant, where almost every other person we know has had that variant. So if we're vaccinated or not vaccinated, science is now showing that the natural immunity is two to four times stronger than a vaccinated individual. And a study, we've also got studies out that show, over 150-plus studies that show masks are ineffective and that the transmission of these viral particles are so tiny, microscopic level that they can be transmitted through our masks. So we all know that masks don't work. So it's time, we need time for a change now and it needs to be done immediately. With everything that we see from all the political aspects of this issue as well, from our politicians that are speaking out loud, our public health officials that are speaking out loud, they are not MDs, they are not the clinicians practicing with our patients. They are not qualified to tell the schools that, you know what, your child, the children must be masked. These individuals are just all political and that's all that they have to say. They don't really know the real aspects of how this disease works. So, so as administrative staff and as the board members, you guys need to see the other side of the story. You need to really look deep in and see the research that's really being put out there. CDC.
Ritu, I'm sorry I had to interrupt you. It's been three minutes. But thank you very much. The next person we're going to hear from is Tracy McGregor for three minutes. Tracy? Okay, I'm going to move on to Deborah Terme.
Dear members of the board, thank you for listening to our comments. My son goes to Horace Mann. The other day when I picked him up from school, he told me that he felt like he was having a heart attack running with his mask on outside. I told him that he shouldn't be running outside with a mask. He then went on to explain to me that he could be sent to the principal's office if he took off his mask during PE. This is literal craziness. How can the school expect a child to run with a mask, breathing in who knows what chemical? This is pure torture. When our leaders are taking pictures without masks, how can we expect our kids to wear masks? Our kids' health should be our priority. Pressmen in Sinai have stopped masking outdoors. What is taking this board so long? We talk about how important social and emotional is for our kids. Let's take action on that. It's not healthy for kids to be outside with masks unable to socialize because they can get out of breath. Kids should be outside enjoying the sun and enjoying athletics and sports without having to deal with the masks. I hope that you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person we're going to hear from is Ellie Samadi and Daphna Hollander will cede her time for a total of six minutes.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. Hello, my name is Ellie Samadi and I would like to start by congratulating Mrs. Wells on her new position as the board president and also wish her a very happy birthday. Mrs. Marcus, thank you for your hard work and dedication as our previous president. Mr. Halimi, welcome to our board. I look forward to working together. I want to thank Dr. Breggy, the other board members, all the administrators, teachers, and staff who have worked diligently in trying to find solutions in these trying times. We all have the same goal, which is to provide a safe, harmonious educational environment where our children can thrive. The reason I'm speaking today is because of what was said in the board meeting two weeks ago. The principals from our elementary school stated that there were no issues with children complying with masks and that overall students seemed to be doing fine. That statement shook me to the core. Nothing could be further from the truth. Children's compliance is not something to be proud of, nor is it an indication of their happiness. Children have been scared, coerced, bribed, and bullied into submission. Martin Luther King said, "One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." He also said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Why is it that scientific data from all over the world has shown that children have the lowest COVID risk and yet our schools are imposing the strictest COVID protocols on them? As a licensed MFT who specializes in treating children and adolescents, I have extensive experience working with children and I'm advocate for them. I asked parents in our district if they would like me to share some of their children's experiences with the board and they agreed. I want to give a voice to those who are defenseless and silenced before they can even develop a voice. Keep in mind, the majority of these comments are from very young in our elementary and middle schools and for confidentiality reasons, their identities will not be disclosed. Here are some of their common statements. "I can't take it anymore. I want to kill myself." "My teacher told me not to get too close, so she doesn't want to get COVID from the students and die." "My teacher told me that I can get a virus and I can kill my family. I'm afraid of my teacher." "She told me that if I don't pull my mask up, I'm going to die and kill the other students." She was screaming at me even though I kept telling her, "I can't breathe." I told her that I have, I'll run a few laps and then walk a few laps, but she told me she will send me to the principal's office. I was called stupid for not wearing my mask correctly. All the kids are turning against each other because of contact tracing. If you come done pee outside without masks, but she made us to pee inside with masks by the 80th jumping jacks, I thought I was going to faint. I was on my way to class after a meeting during recess and I was starving, so I was eating my snack and the staff told me, "If I ever see you eating in the hallway again, I will take your food and throw it in the trash." I was sent to the principal's office because I kept pulling my mask down during baseball. I was getting lightheaded but didn't want to stop since I love playing, excuse me, basketball. A school staff has told me that others will die if I remove my mask, so I'm terrified to remove it to eat. I don't eat in school anymore. Several students have had horrible asthma attacks, running them out, and now only avoid, walk to avoid further health damage. I recently listened to a recording of a six-year-old student who was so distraught about the abuse he endured at school that he was threatening to kill himself and engaged in self-harming behaviors. This letter is from a mother who has a child in middle school. "My child has been battling anxiety and suicidal ideation regarding the masks and testing. The day before testing caused him great anxiety. He's terrified of testing positive. He has had at least two panic attacks at school, but the teacher didn't notice because of the mask. I asked him why he didn't go to the nurse. He said he was scared. They would accuse him of having COVID and send him home. He was, he has consistent headaches. He complains of teachers bullying and humiliating his friends because their masks may have fallen below their nose. The worst thing of it all that he wishes he would never wake up. He said to me recently, "If this goes on for any longer, I'm going to kill myself." This child has a serious psychological diagnosis that affects him medically. A psychiatrist has specific recommendations for his condition, which includes him needing to take breaks, but it was not granted. This statement is from a mother who has a daughter in ninth grade. "My daughter has become so depressed, the mask caused her to develop a habit of wanting to hide her face because she feels she's ugly. Teenagers are already insecure and unfortunately developing body dysmorphia. The board should know that children are also very good at hiding how anxious and depressed they really are. Fear of retaliation by the school staff, including teachers, is the number one reason many issues are not being reported. So many students are scared of the abusive adults in their school and getting bullied by them. Many of the parents in our district are also afraid to speak up about the injustice towards their children. They are afraid of retaliation against their children." There are so many other statements along the same lines. I could submit a hundred-page document with all the complaints that I have read and seen and read about. The purpose of me reading these statements is not to shame or blame. It is to bring awareness regarding serious issues that are not being addressed. I know that people have different thresholds about how they manage their fear and anxiety. I don't think that any staff has the intention of harming children, but unfortunately, there are staff in our district that are struggling with coping with COVID and are projecting their fears onto our children.
Ellie, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time is up. Oh wait, I'm sorry, it's three minutes. The timer, it is. Okay, that is six minutes. I apologize. Thank you very much. The next person that we'll hear from is Natasha Imani and Janice Brenman has ceded her time for a total of six minutes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Before you start my minutes, I just wanted to say something that's not included. You didn't start yet, right?
I stopped.
Okay, thank you so much. I just want to bring awareness to the point where at this point, after two years, it's really a shame that we are still sitting behind a screen and expressing our views to you guys through Zoom. I think at this point, we should really be in person because I feel that our concerns and what we want to express to you guys are not taken seriously through a screen as much as they would be as if we were in person. So I really hope that you guys are considering this because there's school boards across the nation, almost all are pretty much open to in-person.
Natasha, I'm sorry I'm going to interrupt you. We're going to start the clock because
Okay, so please consider what I said because that's crucial right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And happy birthday, Mary. Okay. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing for our kids. Everyone is on this ride together with different personal experiences. That is why human dignity and mutual respect for each other is golden. This is not about left-wing, right-wing, liberal, conservative. This is not about politics. This is about us as parents doing what is right for our children and standing up together against something that threatens our ability to parent our own children. This district has decided to follow Los Angeles County's absurd, tyrannical, abusive, coercive, and discriminatory so-called mandates, which are not even laws. Everyone is well-aware of the hypocrites in charge above that are supposedly trying to keep us safe and healthy when they themselves cannot even practice what they preach. The people of this state and the district are rising up. You have awoken a sleeping giant. I know that many of you think or say, "Oh, they're just kids. They're resilient." Well, unfortunately, just like one size does not fit all, this is not the case for all kids. The mental, physical, psychological, and irreversible damage that has been done to many of our children for years to come is a complete catastrophe. I would like to share with you a few things about my own kids. I have one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one in elementary. My third grader refuses to go to school almost on a daily basis. He is a very social and outgoing child, so this is not like him at all. He has been forced, coerced, and harassed to keep his mask above his nose and mouth while running laps during PE outdoors. In many instances, he has been sent to the office and lost recess for simply the mask slipping down and being uncomfortable during outdoor play to keep it on. He has stated that he can't breathe and that the mask gives him anxiety. The PE teacher and administration seem not to understand how negative this is. Aren't they all about promoting health? Do they not understand that obstructing oxygen flow is dangerous and harmful? What happened to being kind and empathetic to the most vulnerable? You all preach and try to instill behavior of kindness on campus, yet you don't exhibit this with our children. My middle schooler has had to miss many days of school from headaches and skin rash irritation from the mask exacerbating her eczema around her lip area, being screamed at and scolded by admin and teachers in the hallway, again, simply for taking her mask down for relief. My high schooler unfortunately has lost all motivation for going to school. His grades have been immensely and adversely affected. This is clearly not about a virus anymore. This is clearly about control. When and which one of you will stand up for our kids? Yes, I know you will say you have to do your job, which leads me to ask our administration and teachers, if you were told to lace our kids' water with a controlled substance to keep them calm and attentive all day, even though you know it's harmful and wrong, would you still do it? Where do you draw the line when it comes to being told what to do to keep your job? What happened to morals, ethics, and values and doing the right thing? What happened to being good? Where are all the adults in charge that actually have a spine to put their foot down and say enough? Our kids are being led by many spineless cowards and we are disappointed. On top of all, school has not allowed parents to go in, not allowed to volunteer, not even allowed to simply go into the office and drop something off for our child. I really didn't want to have to state facts and statistics. However, it seems that many of you are either ignoring and turning a blind eye, or you simply don't know what's really going on after two years. So here we go. According to the CDC, children ages five to 14 years old have a 0.2% chance of dying from COVID. Yet from all the deaths, suicide is 1.5%, homicide is 0.7%, cardiovascular disease 0.6%, drowning is 0.5%, flu and pneumonia is 0.3%. Basically, children driving to school have a much higher risk of dying than from COVID-19. Suffocation and COVID are the exact same measure, yet this district has decided to go in their own direction against the will of the taxpayers of this area and want to mask our children. We know what masking children does. This has a serious mental health toll on young people, the inability to communicate, the inability to even hear what teachers are saying. In fact, masking makes people unfamiliar with each other. It makes you less likely to be able to empathize with one another. God gave us a face for a reason. As a school board, your function is to side with reason, rationale, and logic and to protect our children from harm. Saying you are just following orders or mandates or Los Angeles County of Public Health are no excuse. Each of you individually will be held accountable for this false fraudulent measures you currently have in place at our school concerning masks, vaccines, and testing. I am a very large majority, who by the way, are shy and afraid to speak up. I'm speaking on behalf of all of us, for the people that don't want to speak up and don't want to show their face. I expect a change, we expect a change ASAP for the sake of our children's health and mental well-being. Let's move forward together, not backwards. Let's preserve our precious community. Please, let's respect each other's, each family's personal choices for the sake of humanity. And I don't want to be harsh like this and sound like I'm attacking anyone, but I and many of us are frustrated at this point and we really need to save our children and we need to go back to normal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Natasha. The next person that we're going to hear from is Marjan Nuare. And Marie Nieman has ceded her time for a total of six minutes. And Marie Nieman has ceded her time for a total of six minutes. Marjan, you're on mute.
Hello. Good evening to the members of the board and to all watching. I would like to congratulate and welcome Mr. Halimi and thank him for presenting all the evidence-based science of the study session. I would also like to thank the rest of the board for bringing Mr. Halimi onto the board. Mr. Margot, I would like to thank you for finally asking the very important question at the last study session at the two-hour mark into the meeting. A question many parents have been asking for many months and not receiving an answer to. Unfortunately, our question was again not answered at the study session. The question you asked was, is there any correlation with the funds received and the protocols that are being followed? The real answer is yes, and it can easily be found on the California Department of Education website. On this website, it clearly explains the three tiers of the ESAR fund and also the GEAR fund that were given to the state by the federal government. And you can see the three separate Excel spreadsheet, which clearly show the millions of dollars that BHUSD has received just from the ESAR fund. On the website, it also states that in order to receive the fund, the school must follow certain protocols, which includes coordination with local health departments. These are the funds that the parents have been referring to and not the $500,000 received from the CDC. Now, a new question has arrived from many people. Why is there no transparency for the stakeholders and for the board members? When a simple question is asked, why is the question not being answered fully and truthfully? If there's nothing to hide, then why didn't Mr. Wade disclose in full that the district has received the ESAR funds and GEAR fund and the amount which was received, just like he disclosed the $500,000 that was received by the CDC? In fact, Mr. Wade pretty much did not tell the truth because he answered the question by saying, we only received one small grant from the CDC for the amount of $500,000 that was used on testing and these funds have been spent pretty much as of today. It was only when Mrs. Marcus, thank you, Mrs. Marcus, for us, it was only when Mrs. Marcus asked if the district will now have to dip into the general funds to cover the COVID protocols and testing going forward, that Mr. Wade very swiftly replied by mentioning that there is some ESAR and GEAR funds and he failed to disclose the amounts of those funds, which again are in the millions and all public information. He also failed to answer our original question as to what protocols must be followed in order to receive these state and federal funds. Also, is it a coincidence that the third tier of ESAR fund, by the way, was the, which was by the way, the biggest chunk of millions received, had to be approved by October 2021? And our district-wide weekly testing was implemented on October 15, 2021? If this is really about health and not money tied to it, then why didn't we as a district have weekly testing in the beginning of the year when Delta was much more dangerous? Why now? There are many other questions that remain unanswered, such as, why has the district not hired additional people to manage COVID protocols so that the administration can do what they were hired to do? Are the administration getting additional pay from these ESAR or any kinds of funding, government, from government and federal? Why does it seem like the negotiations with the teachers' unions are one-sided and favor the teachers' union? Perhaps it's time to have someone else negotiate on our behalf. Why is it that at the study session, the school principals answered the board's question by saying that the students do not have an issue wearing the mask outdoors and at PE, when in fact, many of the students do? Why did Mr. Budwee fail to also tell you that the day after winter vacation, he announced at the MMA to the entire school that everyone has to wear a mask outdoors and it's not up for discussion? Does he really believe that after he has made such a strict announcement that he will have an unbiased answer to your question? The board partly makes certain decisions based on the information you receive from the principal, who are your boots on the ground? And if you're receiving biased information, then it makes it difficult for you to make the correct decision. Why is it that parents are being bullied by the parents on WhatsApp class chat if they, if they dare speak up about the COVID protocols? How it's affecting their kids negatively? Why is it the same people always censoring anyone that dare speak up? No, we are not the minority. Many people are just scared to speak up against the COVID narrative because they are scared of being blacklisted and kicked out of the class WhatsApp chat, just like some parents have been kicked out of the chats and they have, they are being silenced. In closing, I would like to say that light will always shine a light on darkness and that every lie will be revealed. The students and the stakeholders in this district deserve and demand answers and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person that we'll hear from is Mahal Amir Salkin for three minutes.
Members of the board. First of all, thank you for the thoughtful discussion of the risks and benefits of the COVID protocols at the January 25th study session. I heard concern that the people who spoke during the public comment time were all opposed to the protocols and were not representative of the community as a whole. That is a valid concern. Some people are comfortable speaking out in public. Many are not. It's what we call selection bias. You are getting a self-selected group, which may not accurately represent the entire community. The same problem can happen with surveys. But there is a way to alleviate that problem. Open your meetings to the public. You may remember the heated reconfiguration deliberations. Many people spoke, including children, and hundreds more community members filled Chirney Hall. They may not have felt comfortable speaking, but they cared deeply. Sometimes a board member would respond to a comment and a back and forth discussion ensued. Sometimes the audience reacted spontaneously, clapping or booing or even yelling back at the board, making their positions known. And community members had the opportunity to talk with each other, sharing different perspectives on the issues. In the end, whether or not we agreed with the decision, we all felt heard and respected. That is not true today. The community has been shut out of board meetings for nearly two years. Zoom meetings started as a temporary measure, but are now a matter of course automatically renewed session after session. You see us as talking heads on a screen, not real people. We must wait for the meeting to start, but you mute us if we go a second over our time. And community members who are not comfortable making a speech have been rendered completely voiceless. Beverly Hills USD is badly fractured. Little kids scared of their teachers. Big kids who have lost respect for authority. Parents not trusting the district to protect their children. Everyone suspecting everyone else of sacrificing one group's well-being to another group's self-interest. And feel free to insert your preferred group on either side of that equation. Members of the board. Beverly Hills cannot become a great school district until it heals. A crucial step is to bring us back together in person so we can reconnect as a community of people who all want our kids to be healthy, happy, and well-educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mahal. The next person we'll hear from is Judith Chan and her time, Gabrielle Radonsky has ceded her time. So Judith, you'll have six minutes.
Thank you. I'm also here to address some of the things discussed in the last study session. First, I want to let you know that many of my colleagues and I are very pleased that the district has rolled out a testing program before winter break. And now we have also increased the availability of the program at every site. I was truly a little nervous coming back to teach after winter break, knowing about the surges of Omicron. And since I teach all grade levels with over 500 kids, everybody who tested positive or who became a close contact to someone positive was at one point in my classroom. Therefore, hearing the school board discuss how much wiggle room we can get out of following the LA County Health Guidelines in terms of masking mandate or changing the testing program we have in place concerned me a lot. Yes, it is inconvenient and could be uncomfortable to wear the mask all the time. But if that's what it takes for the greater good of the entire school community, then that's what we need to do for now. I and many colleagues have noticed that the kids have become very good at keeping their mask above their nose. I do see all classes, all 26 classes. It is a norm that I notice after the break. I don't even have to remind them. If their mask fall down on its own, they, they would adjust it themselves. Even the kindergartners can do that for the whole class time. Children model after the adults and it's amazing how resilient and adaptive they can be. While mortality rate is low among children, they can definitely spread the virus to the adults. The staff are not in that low-risk COVID age group. Some of us have to take care of aging parents and relatives. Some of us have other health issues and surgeries. I do not want to get COVID just to see whether it will be like a flu or not. It might be like a flu. It might not be like a flu, but I don't want to take that chance to do it. I like to come to school knowing that my employer will do all they can to protect us from getting the virus while we are working on campus. The question you asked was whether it's fair for children to pay the price to protect the adults? My question will be, if the teachers get sick, who will come to school to teach the kids? As a staff, and I'm also a parent in this district for a long time, I know that there are many parents who are pleased and they agree to comply to the safety COVID measures we have in place. They believe in vaccines, booster shots, mandate the testing, and masks are all necessary steps to keep our schools safe and open. They don't believe that masks are harmful. And just because they don't have a WhatsApp group to blast about it doesn't mean that they are not part of our community and there are just as many of them. Beverly Hills is part of a greater Los Angeles community. We don't live in a bubble. If things become better and the county health guidelines will change for all the school districts, then we follow the change. But it should not be up to us, one district, to change the rules first. Therefore, I command and implore the school board to continue to follow the LA County Health Guidelines and recommendations and continuing our testing program to keep our schools safe and open. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. The next person that we'll hear from is Mona Dan. And Mona, you have three minutes.
I'm a primary care physician in Los Angeles. I'd like to start by reminding everyone that the virus that we're talking about and was just previously spoken about has a far more threat than just the physical aspect at this point that we've all addressed, right? We've done vaccination, social distancing, masking. Let's also not forget the rate at which people have natural immunity too. At this point, we're infringing on the mental and emotional health and wellness of our children. Regardless of your viewpoints on masking, I think we can all agree that it's 100% unnatural for children to live like this six to eight hours a day. Breathing in the release of toxin carbon dioxide has side effects, whether they are seen today or we will see in the future. We're damaging the overall wellness of our children today with the decisions that we're making today. Aside from the microbes released through the carbon dioxide release, masks have chemicals, many that are released from the machines they are made on and others that are added like formaldehyde and fluorocarbons. Face masks for the use by the general public aren't regulated and often fall short of the standards set by medical-grade PPE. Please take a moment to think about what damage these masks will cause. My son has been hospitalized three times over this past year, which has never happened before. Since starting the school year, he's been on a nebulizer twice a day and is now on different medications to manage his breathing. After months of testings, we've come to the conclusion it's an allergy that his allergies and wheezing have been exacerbated by masking. But here's the tricky part. None of his specialists are willing to give him a masking exemption that he desperately needs because they are not allowed to by their state boards. They're fearful of their licenses. If other states have the same numbers and are wide open, why are we doing this to our kids? Why are we only talking about removing masks outdoors? There needs to be a total removal. Why are we not protecting them? If an adult or child wants to wear a mask, they still obviously can. But the decision for our kids is one for the parents to choose on how their children should participate in life at this point of the pandemic. With children being in the group of individuals who are least affected that we spoke about, it's clear that the social, the school systems are now harming our kids who are responsible, who they are responsible for in order to protect the adults. If the teacher, for example, got COVID, she'll be back in school in a week. If all of them happen, we can figure it out. Adults who can clearly decide how they want to manage or protection of the virus themselves can do so. It's truly time for the ones who are still scared to mask up, stay home and quarantine, so the ones willing to play the game of life can live normally. Beverly Hills School District, the financial agreements made at the cost of our kids is an assault to their livelihoods and their futures. Please remember this very powerful quote by author G. Michael Hoff. Hard times create strong men. Strong men create good times. Good times create weak men, and the weak men, they create the hard times. At this point, the weakness of our leadership will be creating a devastating future.
Thank you very much. The next person we'll hear from is from Leo Imani. Leo, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Leo and I just wanted to say that at school, I really have a hard time keeping my mask on indoors and outdoors. And I really want it to go away because the masks gives, the mask gives me anxiety. I can't breathe. I want to see my teacher's face and I want to hear her. You know, it's really hard for me and like, it's really hard for me to keep my mask on indoors and outdoors while running in PE. Because while we do laps, the PE teacher makes us do a lot of laps with our masks above our nose all times, at all times. And I just really want it to like go away because I don't want to be growing up like this. I'm healthy. I'm not sick. Why do I have to still wear a mask? I don't want to grow up like that. So yeah, thank you for having me and that's all I would like to say.
Thank you very much, Leo, for speaking out tonight. The next person that we'll hear from is from Jim Simons. And you have three minutes. Jim? Okay, I'm going to move on to Ralph Levy and Gabrielle Levy will cede her time. So you have six minutes.
Good evening to the board. February 15th is a new era for California. Sort of, for vaccinated only, but not in Etta County. Several states such as New Jersey, Oregon, Connecticut, Delaware already declared that mask mandates were going to end for school, but not California and not Etta County either. Science doesn't seem to prevail around here. Despite a factual expose by Mr. Alimi during the last board meeting, there has not been any taken action by this board, despite the objectively low risk for our students, the damage caused to their mental health, and the degradation of their performance in academics. At least one board member stood up for our students. I am disappointed by this board, but I am also hopeful. Disappointed because the first thing Mr. Alimi- Disappointed because the first thing Mr. Alimi said two weeks ago was that the opinion expressed in these presentations were not the views of the board, despite ninety-nine percent of the presentation being factual statistics from government agencies. You really have to wonder why the statistics, logical conclusions, and recommended action plans did not gather the unanimous support of the board. Disappointed also because no board member over at Mr. Alimi showed empathy towards our students who suffer from the excessive precaution measures, which are disproportionate to the extremely low risk inherent to a virus. Now, I'm also hopeful because of the defensive attitude adopted by several board members, and I will provide three examples. Example number one. Only a minority of parents are not happy, and they are the only ones speaking during the board meetings. Many parents are happy and thank us. Well, what that tells me is that there is a serious need of self-reassurance, which means that deep inside, the board realizes that its current course of action is wrong and that it needs to convince itself otherwise. And no, some parents are thanking you because they're afraid of retribution to other children and also because they are not aware of the low-risk COVID-19 represents to their children because of this information. Example number two. We cannot enforce outdoors masking. We should not say we enforce it. It is hypocritical. No. What is hypocritical is to keep our children masked outside when we know contamination is extremely rare in that setting. The enforcement should not have been put in place at all. Example number three. We cannot go against Etta County and need to abide by the MOU with the teachers. What a pathetic excuse. There is a big difference between saying that we cannot make any change because of what is, versus saying something like, "The current situation in terms of masking and other COVID protocols for our students are wrong. We need to make changes, taking into account the existing constraints. And if these rules are wrong, we will define our own and explain our standard to the Etta County and renegotiate our MOU with teachers." I think Mr. Alimi said that as well. All these comments show that this board is becoming conscious that BHUSD is behind the curve on COVID-19. Seventy percent of Americans are ready to turn the page and live normal with COVID. Normally with COVID. Why not BHUSD? Who are afraid of Etta County to take a stand for our students and show some empathy towards them and what they have been going through? Recent unmasked pictures of the LA mayor and California governor did not cause the closure of either the mayor's or the governor's office, as far as I know. Why would unmasked kids close our school district? And just for the sake of repeating myself over a fifth time, K-12 have a higher risk to land in hospital because of a vaccine side effect than contracting COVID-19. This debate will be next, and we will keep fighting should BHUSD mandate vaccine for the district. Any of these all said, and I quote, "We must always take sides." How about we all take our student's side rather than follow the Etta County rules blindly without questioning their relevance or negative impact on our kids? Parents are standing here to help this board make the right step forward for our kids. The choice is now yours. It is time to make a stand. Please make us proud of BHUSD again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. The next person we'll hear from is Sagali Sabag for three minutes.
Hi.
Yes, we can.
Hello?
We can hear you.
First of all, I'd like, great. Okay, Judith Chan just spoke to my dismay. She wants the kids to keep their mask on. I didn't expect to say this, but Judith Chan, as you know, is our music teacher, elementary at Horace Mann. And she took it upon herself to teach the kids about BLM and racism during her whole class, her whole class. And she did it to all the kids. I didn't confront her, I didn't speak about it, but now's the time, since I just heard her speak, that she wants to suffocate our kids. That said, I'd like to thank Mr. Halimi for his endless hours of research, and I'd like Judith Chan to please listen to the Board of Education study session on January twenty-fifth, 2022. Mrs. Chan, she left the meeting, as I saw. I have personally spoken to the board previously and have raised the issue on how the masks do not work, and that, to the contrary, masking our children indoors and outdoors does harm and our children physically and mentally. And by the way, my children love music. They love Chan, Mrs. Chan, and they did not appreciate listening to BLM during music. I just want you to know that. I bet you, nobody knows that. I'm furious right now, I'm sorry. I request, as a parent with children, well, first of all, I have to go back to my written speech. I have wondered why the board has not brought up these issues before. There has not been transparency with the ESAR Elementary and Secondary School Relief Funds that BHUSD has received in return for complying with the mandates. I request, as a parent with children that go to BHUSD, the exact amount of funds be disclosed with the conditions that have to be met in order to receive the relief funds. I also request a transparency spreadsheet of where the funds have been allocated. There are no soap dispensers, as you have heard, but it's more important to suffocate our kids six to eight hours a day while they breathe carbon dioxide and their own toxins. I heard many, many parents speak, which I didn't expect because I thought we were the minority. Government officials such as Gavin Newsom and Mayor Garcetti, as you know, are enforcing these mandates, and they are maskless, hugging an HIV-positive patient, and then tries to convince all of us that if you hold your breath and there are zero percent there will be zero percent transmission, so we can all hold our breath and we'll be fine. It is not about health or science, and it is all about money and power, the power to control our children and to receive relief funds in return. Yes, we will all, we all know this through our own research, and I really wish that Judith Chan will watch Mr. Halimi's session on January twenty-fifth, 2022. Please have her watch it. Now, I would like to be transparent of what your mandates have done to our wonderful teachers and children, and I love Mrs. Chan, don't get me wrong, she's a wonderful teacher. Our teachers at BHUSD have turned into physicians, scientists, and political experts. As Dr. Braggie knows very well, some teachers have taken it upon themselves to segregate, discriminate, and mentally abuse some children. This is unacceptable and will not be tolerated. Some teachers have decided to preach BLM in the music class. Interesting, I wrote that, I didn't expect her to speak.
Sagali, I'm sorry I have to interrupt you. I apologize, but it's been six minutes. I'd like to move on to Shiva Bagheera for three minutes. Is Shiva there? Okay, I'm going to move on to the next person, and that is Ethan Smith for three minutes.
Good evening. During times like this, it's appropriate and necessary to pause every now and then and say thank you to those of you who are working so hard to keep everybody in the BHUSD community safe and healthy, and that's my purpose here tonight. I want to say thank you, board, and thank you, cabinet, for all the unseen and sometimes unappreciated work you're doing on behalf of the students, the faculty, and the staff of Beverly Hills Unified School District. I also want to extend a thank you to the administrators of each of our sites. When they decided to become principals, I'm sure contact tracing wasn't at the top of their reasons. But due to their efforts, I know that, at least at my site, Beverly Hills High School, we went from something like forty positive cases our first week back from winter break to only five positive cases last week. Well done, administration. Indeed, I took the members of my choirs on a field trip to the Disneyland Resort Imagination Campus for an audio recording workshop, and Ms. Starkins made sure I had on-the-spot COVID tests for each student before they got on the bus. And my principal, Mr. Stewart, was there with me at seven AM to make sure that students were tested, that they tested negative, and that we were all masked up and ready to go for our trip. It's this type of above-and-behind work that has kept us safe and is helping the numbers go in the right direction. Nobody likes to wear masks, not students, not staff, not even union members. But the facts don't lie. California Department of Health recently did a study which proves that people who wear masks are fifty-six to eighty-three percent less likely to contract COVID. I know you're all reading these studies too because of your wise choice to supply us with KN95 masks and to keep up our weekly COVID testing. So many other districts are not being as vigilant as we, and I, as the Vice President of the Beverly Hills Education Administration, want to publicly thank you for your foresight in keeping these simple yet very effective methods in place. I know you're all aware that some of us have elderly parents or children of our own that are too young for vaccines, rely on us not only for their care but also to stay COVID-free for their health. Imagine if BHUSD had not been as vigilant as we have during all this. The increased rates of infection, the learning loss, and even possible lawsuits. We're all in this together, and Omicron seems to be on the way. Only yesterday, Governor Newsom stated that he will be relaxing many of the mandates in outdoor public places. Can LA County and public schools be far behind? That we have all done so well during this crisis, I say again, is due to your insight and your thoughtfulness and adhering to state and county guidelines. We're almost there. Thank you for the work you've done, and thank you in advance for the reasonable, intelligent steps you will continue to take to assure the best of your ability the continued health of our collective community. Good night.
Thank you very much. The next person that we'll hear from is Nazila Mansuri. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next person, Sean Tabebian.
Hello, hi, this is Nazila. May I speak?
Yes, you may, for three minutes.
Okay, one moment. Thank you, and happy birthday, Mr. Ralph.
Thank you.
Your Honorable Sirs and Madams, our children have gone through so much in these past years, and it's time to end the mandatory masking, testing, and health screening checks. These masks have caused significant social, emotional, and health problems. The psychological effects of wearing masks are hypoxemia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, acidosis, toxicity, inflammation, self-contamination, increase in stress hormone levels, increased muscle tension, and immunosuppression. The psychological effects of masks are fear, mood disturbances, chronic stress condition, insomnia, fatigue, and compromised cognitive performance. Last but not least, the health consequences are increased by predisposition for viral and infection, illnesses, headaches, anxiety, depression, hypertension, cardiovascular disease, cancer, exacerbation of existing conditions, disease, and health deterioration. The masks have clearly proven that they do not prevent transmission and only do harm. This is a liability on your hands with what our children are experiencing and having health issues. Masks should be freedom of choice, and my choice is to let them breathe, which is our God-given right. Why do we have to fill out health screening on a daily basis? It makes no sense. Obviously, if our kid is not feeling good, we don't send them to school. And during school, if they're not feeling well, we get a call from the nurse's office and pick them up. Why are you still testing the kids that already had COVID recently? It's disturbing. No one is doing this except BHUSD. My kids already had COVID in the past month, and not only they were tested, they tested them weekly, you tested them twice. No more. This is not something new. We have been living with these viruses for years. Coronavirus were recorded in the mid-1960s and have been circulated in human systems for centuries. Enough is enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next person we'll hear from, I'll try again, Sean Tabebian.
Yes, thank you. So, two weeks to slow the spread has turned into two years, and a lot of the things that we were told by the CDC, by the FDA, by our county public health department and everything, you know, all of these people that are so concerned, have pretty much been fabricated and over-exaggerated. We all know that the hospital counts are not truly COVID-related deaths, but they are associated with other types of diseases and other types of admissions. But they happened to have COVID at the time, so these counts were all manipulated, all to instill fear. At what point are we going to end this? At what point? Where is the measure? You know, when are we going to know that sanity will be restored again? And, you know, I'm involved in the pandemic myself. I run a COVID testing laboratory. My kids have all contracted COVID with absolutely zero symptoms. And I have anecdotally talked to hundreds of people that have had COVID, and their symptoms, their kids' symptoms were mild to none. And yet, here we are. Here we are, two years later, still wearing a mask, still exercising these crazy rituals and, you know, destroying our kids. I personally just recovered from COVID by taking ivermectin. Oh, what a surprise! Ivermectin works! My CT level, that is the cycle threshold level, in case you don't know, that's how you can measure your viral load, dropped ten points as a result of taking medication that has excellent efficacy against, you know, this virus. It worked like a charm, but, you know, they don't want that. They don't want to hear that because there's no financial benefit for them to prescribe a medication that has no monetization anymore. They don't want you to understand anything other than their narrative. And at what point are people in the school district going to wake up and realize that we've all been fooled? You're continuing to get fooled. There's no reason for these kids to be masked. There's no reason for all of this testing and all of this nonsense that's going on. Fear, it's all fear. You guys have all been brainwashed by the media, and you guys are all playing into this crap, and it is crap. The survivability rate for these kids is ninety-nine point nine-nine percent with comorbidities. I think, you know, in the whole history of the pandemic-
Sean, I'm sorry I have to interrupt you. It's been three minutes. I apologize. The next person we're going to hear from is Yulia Arinzan. And you have six minutes. Roy Arbib has ceded his time.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, board, for giving us opportunity. I would like to clarify a few things. Last board meeting, our principal, Mr. Bogby, stated that kids have no problem with masks. Today, I mean, a lot of parents got really upset with that statement. And today, I would like for you to hear from the kids. I have three kids, and my fourth grader is going to go first.
I really don't like to wear my mask inside or outside because it's really hard to breathe with the mask on, and I like to play a lot of sports. And when I run with the mask on, it's really, really, really hard to breathe. And it gets stuck to my braces, and it's really hard to get out, and it hurts a lot. And I don't like it when any of my teachers scream at me or send me to the principal's office.
Thank you. My middle schooler is going to go next.
I don't like to wear masks, but if anyone wants to wear a mask, I will respect their decision. But if I don't want to wear a mask, please respect me and my decision.
And my first grader is going to go.
I really don't like wearing a mask. I want to see my friends' faces. I want to breathe the fresh air. And I don't like wearing masks inside or outside.
I would like for you to recognize that these kids are begging and asking for your permission to breathe freely, fresh air. And to conclude, I would like I would like to say that pointing fingers to other organizations and saying, "This is not our rules, and we're just following orders," is irresponsible. Every member of this board is extremely intelligent, talented. You have a voice, and you have a power. But most importantly, you have a platform. You got carried away following orders, and it's time to do the right thing. Time to use the platform and advocate for our kids. Our kids cannot advocate for themselves. And remember, adults are capable to protect themselves. There are a lot of measures and a lot of layers of protections available- There are a lot of measures and a lot of layers of protections available. Just like Ms. Chan just acknowledged, that she has 500 students that have to carry the burden for her to stay safe. It is irresponsible. Adults are capable to do that, not our children. They're not to carry this burden. And that's all for us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our students for speaking out tonight and advocating for themselves. I think that's really wonderful. The next person we'll hear from is Linda Faruzan, and you have three minutes. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next person. Robin Ross for three minutes.
All right. Can you give me a few minutes? Is there anyone else you can call before me, or am I the last one?
No, I can move on. Who's speaking?
It's Robin Ross. It says Camden, I don't know how to change it. Every time I use Zoom, she gets on, and it says my name for her Zoom. And when I get on, it says my name for, like, you know, with her, so, sorry.
It's okay. We'll come back to.
Wonderful.
The next person then is Alana Castanon.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Elena Castanon, and I am the Beverly Hills Education Association Certified President and Middle School STEM teacher. Thank you for your time this evening. I know that you have a lot of agendized items still coming up, so I do appreciate your time. And also, thank you for your attention to the comments which were submitted to be entered into the record. I appreciate your time that you'll take reading those. BHUSD and BHEA have worked throughout the course of this pandemic to engage in meaningful agreements to protect the health and safety of the community, students, and school staff. This year, our district has been able to continually keep our schools open for in-person instruction, and that was no small feat. These efforts are appreciated. There is an expectation in Los Angeles County that health and safety measures will be followed and implemented. There is no need to violate the trust that the county, the community, and staff have in BHUSD and force diminished safety measures at our schools. COVID infection numbers are in fact coming down. However, this is not the time to throw up our hands simply because we're tired of the rules. Continued following and enforcement of rules and guidelines keep our school community safe and healthy. This is appropriate and expected. As a reminder for everyone, if you are able, please seek out vaccinations and boosters. This continues to be high on the list of recommendations from medical professionals. I personally would be interested to learn what the reported vaccination rates are for our community, and if we are in fact on track to achieve the levels of vaccination that are recommended by medical professionals. On another completely different topic, if you'll indulge me, our district in fact has a long history of issuing reduction in force or RIF notifications each year. Unfortunately, this causes a great deal of turmoil, heartache, and concern for those teachers who are impacted. Not knowing for months at a time if they will be able to return to BHUSD in the fall semester is a terrible way for them to spend their months. I'm asking you, this year, before considering issuing any RIFs, work to identify the upcoming needs of our district, whether that's the expansion of TK offerings in BHUSD, continuing to address the learning needs of students as we come through the pandemic, and perhaps just plain old keeping our class sizes low. Please do not engage in a process that is in fact unnecessary on any front. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Elena. The next person we'll hear from is Lane Whipple for three minutes. Okay, the next person is A.B. Batia. And I'm gonna go back to Robin Ross. Robin, are you ready?
I'm ready. I mean, you know, as ready as I'll ever be, right? I mean, every time somebody else spoke, it just made me feel like that's something else that I can talk about and bring, you know, to everyone's attention. But I'm not gonna just kiss a little butt and thank everybody for things and say happy birthday to Mary's birthday, when we can't even see Mary's face on our screen, because she's hiding on a desk in between people that are very far away from us. And if you started my timer already with the three minutes, stop the clock now, because we were in a meeting together just last week or so, and you were gonna follow up with me when you got disconnected in our thing. So, I do wanna thank certain people. I wanna thank the people that have been standing up in our community to keep all of us safe and to not have to fight for our lives, literally, the nerve that you all have. One of my friend's child speaks tonight, and certainly didn't take up three minutes, and you're not gonna take the time to ask this child anything or say anything to him? Do you know what kind of courage it took him to speak? I mean, let's be human here, all of you. Thank you, Gabe, we do love you. And you know what? Everybody else, Dr. Kelly Scone, I'm just, I don't have anything in front of me right now, and I did have notes prepared, and there's a lot I wanna talk about. And if we don't get to have a meeting, all of us, soon, with back-and-forth dialogue, and we can't ask questions that you're gonna answer on the spot, then you're gonna have to leave, because you're not in power here over all of these people. You're just not. You can't think that you're just gonna destroy lives and abuse children and get away with it, because we're not gonna take it. And then in my vlog, I start singing, "We're not gonna take it, I know, we're not..." You know what I'm saying? So, there's fun in it too. You have to understand, we are done. And I'm not prepared, because if anyone hasn't noticed, there's a lot of danger and crime happening on- and in that same meeting that Mary, you know, wasn't, kept getting the drop call, you know, was our mayor and our police commissioner. And they both said, the mayor didn't say it, but the police commissioner said he was gonna meet with me. But the meeting's with the captain. And if we don't start at the top, okay? If we don't start at the top, then we can't make all of the corrections that we need to make here. And if we don't start demanding that you allow us to speak and listen to us and hear us, because if you shut us up anymore, you're going to be held more and more responsible for all the abuse that you are putting on other people. And that's it. And it's better for people that are committing crimes to tell the truth themselves. And if certain people have certain-
Thank you, Robin. The next person we're gonna hear from is Hunan Shanan. Okay, I believe that completes our public comments. Did I miss anybody? Who?
Cam was the one most speaker. They end up- No, she asked for Hunan, and he wasn't there.
That's the only one that I had added.
Okay, well done, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, everyone, for your birthday wishes. All right, may I have an approval for the consent calendar?
I will move for the approval of the consent calendar. Did anybody have anything they wanted to pull?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did. Go ahead, Gabe.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can I pull 11C, please?
What they didn't want pulled, no.
Eli was speaking, go ahead.
Oh, 11C.
11?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna take out 11B1.
B1?
Anyone else? I was gonna take out 11F, 11L, and 11N.
I've got C as in Charles, B1, F as in Frank, L as in Lincoln, N as in Nora. So far.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second? I move to approve the consent calendar without C, B1, F, L, and N. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Okay.
Okay. And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes 5-0 with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. The motion was moved by Rochelle Marcus and seconded by Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Okay, the first item, 11C, who would like to-
I will make a motion to-
Well, I think 11B is first.
Oh, sorry, 11B1.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 11B1 in the consent calendar.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Who called for B1?
Noah.
Yeah, I had no discussion on it, I just needed to pull it second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got lost. Right.
It's the certified person-
I'll report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Noah.
You are.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining.
Okay. Thank you, Noah. The motion passes 4-0 with Noah Marga abstaining and Eli Raymer with a provisional vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Sherman Garnett and Associates.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Eli, hold on.
Yep, I did. I just wanted to, what was it? I planned to abstain, because I asked to see some kind of curriculum, and because this has to do with student discipline, I'm unsure if there wasn't one available, or if I just was not able to see it. But I wanted to make it known that I will be abstaining for those reasons.
Thank you, Eli. I'll call for, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Well, hold on, I'd like to know why Eli didn't get that. What happened?
So, this is an organization that will, sometimes it's every two years where they come in and they go over all of the new laws, they go over the new procedures. And so, many of what they'll be talking about is some of our student data that we use. So, it's kind of created with us in a workshop setting. So, it's not really like a template-delivered curriculum. It's really based on a lot of our own student data, the changing laws, and how we work with our administrators to ensure that we're following the law.
Appreciate it, thanks.
I think that was also the question that I had about it, but I got an answer that I thought was sufficient, that dealt with it. So, I had that pulled, but I got an answer.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? I think we are, the motion approves 5-0 with Eli Raymer abstaining.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the approval of agreement with Voss Graphics Incorporated for painting interior graphics at Beverly Hills High School Swim Gym.
I'll second. I'll let Noah second that. Any discussion? This is an item that I pulled. I really just wanted to clarify for the community what this is for and to also update the community on the graphics for the interior of the swim gym.
And this is something also I'll be addressing in my superintendent's report with a picture.
Okay.
Also, Dr. Bregy, will this include the discussion about the mural on the wall?
We have not received any feedback yet on the mural that's on the east wall. So, there is no change in, you know, what we're thinking about doing with that mural.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer.
Let me see, the next one that was called for approval of the 2021, a call for motion to approve the 2021 School Accountability Report Cards.
Hold second.
All those in, any discussion? I'm the person that pulled this. I really wanted to, after reviewing this, and I've been having conversations with Dr. Bregy about, we're at more than a halfway point in the year. And just a reminder, as we look at all the elements that are reported on the SARC report, that it's a good time for us to have a check-in on our strategic plan for the year. And I know that Dr. Bregy's already been working on that and trying to work out a schedule, the best way to present that. But I just wanted to just bring that out in public, that this is a good time for us to do that check-in, because we do wanna keep our eyes on the strategic plan and keep it as a living, working document. And that was it.
My question has to do with the appearance of Elrodeo in the school accountability plan. It's offline right now in the White-
Thank you, Rochelle, I was gonna ask the same thing.
So, let Mr. Seaman step up here and know that it's required.
For the school accountability report cards, because Elrodeo is offline-
Internally, but with the California Department of Education, it is still a school. We have to still submit annually a SARC report for them to keep it moving forward, to continue its CDE number. So, if and when it's ready to open, we don't have to resubmit to the state as a new school.
So, Rochelle, did you wanna ask a question?
Can I jump in on that?
Go ahead, I probably would ask the same question, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so Dustin, knowing the condition of the school that it is in and has been in, and I understand the rationale filing the report, couldn't the report simply say, "School under construction will open, you know, soon," to save staff time in having to prepare that? Because that seemed like a futile exercise. So, I think, whatever, is it, the SARC's are state, right? They're not LACO.
Yeah, they're state, they're state level.
So, is there anybody we can ask in the future to say, if this comes around again, and something should be under construction?
Can we have a pass on this one? We'll file a basic, but not to have to go through all of that work? To, because that's, all of these are a lot of staff time, and it was just, for me, it was what a futile exercise that was.
Yeah. Ultimately, the SARC, though, there is additional information that we submit outside of this. This is really-
Just the published material for the community itself, and I agree with you, especially with the Elrodeo one. But there is additional information that Ken and his team did have to submit to CDE outside of what you see here. So, this is kind of the snapshot of what we actually have to submit. I know, just as an example of working harder instead of working smarter, and even if that's coming from a state level, people should be made aware that at times bureaucracy is a real anchor, you know? And when we're trying to use up valuable time to educate our kids and to keep our administrators focused on students' achievement, then this is something that takes away from that. And as the case may be, even our facility director's time. You know, if he has to support one, he's not particularly associated with that campus at the moment. He will be, but not now. So, once again, drag on our staff time that could be used doing other things. I think the higher-ups need to be informed of that at least, just informed to say, hey, in the future, reconsider this. As you see schools go through construction programs, close buildings down, do whatever they need to do, don't require the same as a fully operating school.
I agree, I had to do the whole booklet.
I do assume that this wasn't something that we just drafted from scratch, though, right? Like, we have ones from previous years, so it's just, yeah. But I was also not to harp on it too much, I was surprised it just wasn't called out at the very front of the Elrodeo one, like, "School's currently closed," so when we say there, this may, you know.
And can I just add, though? So, I mean, we're not a shy cabinet, so we do push back. We push back more than you think, you just haven't heard from the state yet. And it really is an exercise in keeping alive the school name, the school number, the registration, to let that lapse- and it, it really is an exercise in keeping alive the, the, uh, the school name, that, the school number, the registration, to let that lapse and then to have to start all over again, uh, we have talked about that, you know, we believe it's just, um, while it's, you know, time spent, um, to, to keep that going in that registration, um, you know, current is, is what we finally decided, but, you know, be assured that we do push back.
Sorry, Dr. Brady, I completely agree with that part of it.
That's why I'm saying, is there a way to streamline it, to just serve that purpose and not go into all that, but like Abe said, if a lot of it was boilerplate and was there anyway and it wasn't a big deal, then you could say that and I'll shut up, but I just, for the amount of work that I know that these take to prepare.
It's still a big deal.
You know, I just, is there a better way to do this?
Thank you for your support.
Thank you Noah, Rochelle, did that encompass your comments as well?
Yes, that did, uh, my concern was that so much of it is so unnecessary and why do we have to do it, and, and that was my concern, and it's closed, why can't we just tell them it's closed, it's coming back, and I happen to have felt the same way, that's why I brought up the question, why is ER on the, uh, on the list? I mean, if it would've been one thing if we'd been open part of the year, but we haven't been open, it's a whole year now that that encompasses that report, it's non, doesn't seem that it's necessary.
Okay, thank you, um, if there's, go ahead, Tim?
No, it was me, I've, I got one question.
Sorry, it was like ventriloquism.
I know that these are, um, required by the state, but is it required that they look so nice? Because these are, these are fantastic, I'm, I really, I opened that up not expecting to see such a nice, uh, presentation, I thought it was going to be a lot of text on a page, but no, these are, these are really fantastic, excellent job.
Shout out branding, Ms. Starkins.
Alright, if there's no other comments, may, uh, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, motion passes five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. That's, that is correct, right Eli?
Uh, preferential.
Alright, you're blocked, so I just couldn't see you, okay, um.
I will call for the ratification of the purchase order number, report number twelve for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
I'll second. I, I pulled this one, and I've really just had a question, and probably for you Wade, um, it's about the purchase orders, I was looking at, um, I believe it, there, there was a purchase order for Team Concepts, TCDS, and, but I, I think it's actually a change order, so if you could just clarify that for me.
I believe I had that same question and had to spend a lot of time doing a little research trying to figure that out.
Right, I think there is times where I'm, I'm not clear when, uh, something appears on the change order report, I know that we, we individually will approve certain items and then it'll go straight to a purchase order, but, um, I just wanted to clarify for that for my own understanding.
President Wells, do you know, where is it on the report, and, because the report's several pages?
It's under the purchase order report, I have to pull that up for you. It, it's only indicated because in the column it says, under change order, it said three, so that's where I was wondering what that was, there wasn't a change in dollar amount, it just said that it was a change order, that it was in a purchase order report.
Correct, uh, both you and, uh, trustee Marcus had the same question about that, and it shows up, uh, multiple times on this purchase order report, it's part of the new BETH system, but the actual change was a change order of about fifty thousand dollars related to some additional work for VENICO. So the system itself will, will reproduce this purchase order multiple times, and it's very frustrating, both for you guys and for staff, because they'll see it multiple times, but it's part of us getting used to this new system, so we apologize, but that's exactly what that was.
Right, but I think that's change order number two, and, and then change order number two was a different thing.
Yeah, so there were three change orders through the course of the year, and I think the third one was for the VENICO, but I can go back and check and bring it back.
It's really more about, do we, typically we don't see a change order on the purchase order, it's on a change order report.
Right, and it should show up, uh, on the actual change order report also, so you may see it in two places.
Can I just add another comment?
Yeah, I didn't see it on this one, so that's, that's where the confusion is, so when I saw it, why, I thought, why is this on a purchase order? I noticed it said change order, but I couldn't find a change order, so I just didn't know, maybe I didn't understand or if there.
So, I have a new accountant, her name is Ms. Marcus, do you want to jump in here, Ms. Marcus?
Yes, I finally realized that, that this was, uh, uh, purchase order one and then. Purchase order two was same as purchase order one, but one thing added, and I kept going back and going back, and then I finally, I started to add them up myself, and I said, wait, where's the fifty thousand dollars in there, that was all of what purchase order number three was, so I did that, but the question that I had for you is, and that was the one, is that, this is effective as of July first, is that correct, and this is the time for TCDS through, for the whole year, that purchase order is for, for the whole year, from, say, from July first through, right, it's a.
Yes, trustee Marcus.
And if there's another, uh, addition to it, it will get the whole thing back again, and it'll be just whatever the, the addition is.
It's, it's cumulative and that sometimes makes it confusing, you're absolutely right.
Right, it was a line item change.
So on that one, it was moving monies from one fund to another, well, one goal to another goal, uh, but, but it shows up and it can be, can be confusing.
Right, so typically if it's a line item change, does it not go on a change order report, you just put the new purchase order? It does go on a change order report?
It does not.
It does not, because there's no, it, the, the bottom line number stays the same, so since any line item changes do, are just the purchase order report, if it's a, a change in amount, then it would go on a purchase, a change order.
A change order, correct.
That's what I assumed, but I wanted to check that with you.
Right.
Thank you.
The joys of the new system.
Thank you very much, does anyone else have any other questions? Great, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, I don't see Noah actually. Mr. Marga, are you there?
He might have needed a break, he's still recovering.
Let's give him a minute, shall we?
You probably need to step over.
Rebecca, is he on? Yeah, maybe he just stepped away. Alright, I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in favor, but there he is, just in time, hi Noah. We're gonna call for the vote on eleven N, which was the purchase order report.
Okay.
Terrific, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, the motion passes five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer.
Thank you for waiting, you did not have to.
Okay, number, I think we're at superintendent report.
Good evening, everybody, hopefully you can see my screen. Um, I would like to, to start off, uh, just really quickly, I appreciate the, the public comments and, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's tough to sit up here and, you know, and, and, you know, learn about things that are happening that are just absolutely unacceptable, certainly the, uh, the restrooms at the high school, I know that yesterday, um, I just went over and just started to do spot checks, I was at the Conheim, and everything seemed to be in place and everything was supplied, um, our bathrooms start out that way, um, I know we're trying to move security around, there's been a lot of vandalism in our bathrooms and, you know, trying to, uh, you know, be at the right place at the right time when, when that happens is, uh, it's tough to stay on top of, um, you know, the latest TikTok challenges are tough to keep, uh, in front of, um, so, but we're trying to do that because every student, uh, is, is expected to have, um, you know, an experience in the bathroom where every supply is there that they need, so, um, thank you again for that comment tonight, and, uh, I'll be working with, uh, Mr. Mead and, uh, Mr. Haas, uh, this week to find out if there's anything, um, more we can do, I mean, because obviously, that's unacceptable and we're not going to allow that to continue. So to start off, uh, my report, just some congratulations, um, you know, even in some of the toughest times with, with COVID, um, our student athletes have come out ahead in our Ocean League, and congratulations to our boys' basketball team, um, and head, our head coach, uh, Mr. Turner, um, our boys' soccer team, and our head coach Rodrigo De Noso, and then our girls' soccer Ocean League champs, and our head coach, uh, Mr. Ryan Franks, uh, just an exciting opportunity for us to continue, um, in these sports with our athletes, and it's a great tribute, um, to our students and also to Beverly High. So President Wells had, was talking about some of the BOSS graphics work, and so I want to just direct your attention to, uh, the top, where, um, there's some finished products, our projects, and you could see that the outside of the swim gym, um, on the front, um, and then also in the inside of the swim gym, we have our press box, uh, and thank you to the class of, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, who paid for, uh, in part with the press box, so that's up, and, uh, we're excited that that work is finished, uh, what's almost done, and you can see at the bottom, uh, and there's a rendering of what the west wall should look like, uh, we realize that we are missing the B and the S from the swim gym, uh, but we're also missing as well the, the two crests, so, and to get a better look at that area, if you've been by the west wall, the, there's a, there's a, it's a different elevation there, so it goes down, it slants down, and that's why they had the problem, that the type of lift that they had, uh, was not able to work in that area, so, uh, there are scaffolding that will be up by Friday, um, I certainly, if we could go back, I wish that we could have put something up that said, you know, in progress, not finished, um, but that did not happen, I certainly wish that we did, uh, with all the attention that it has, but, um, with the new scaffolding going up by the end of this week, uh, we hope to get this finished, um, add the BS and also our two crests, it's just, it looks beautiful, uh, we just have to finish it off, um, and we are just as impatient as everybody else to ensure that that work gets finished. Um, then on the very right-hand side, this is just outside the swim gym, um, that's our legacy crest, uh, the, uh, the outside, the background of that has all been cut out and that is there, and it's just waiting for the BOSS graphics to finish their work there, and we will be all finished. Would like to, um, just take this opportunity, uh, to talk about our pathways, this is information you've seen before, but we've really changed, we've updated a lot of our work, this is the kind of thing that the more you keep revising, the better it gets, and so this has changed, um, exponentially, just not only the look, but the feel of it, and so, going to click on the high school, for example, give you kind of a full screen view here, and you can see, what's nice about what's changing is we've updated our pictures, um, it's important that we have, you know, our students, our programs, everything in here is authentic for our students and our parents, as you can see, these are updated pictures, these pictures down here, we went and we visited Eli in the robotics lab area, and so we were able to take some great pictures there. And as you can see, there's some additions that we've made, so we've, we're, we have included information about our social emotional learning, um, uh, which, again, Norman Aid Center, the work that Ellie Norman Franks is doing, so important and integrated into, um, our overall school culture, um, without that, um, you know, it's academic suffer, and so this is exciting to be able to put in here the type of support that we offer, uh, for our students. And we've updated our pathways, I realize that that is hard to see, but what's nice about this change, and you can go on our website to see some of this change, is that we've, we've made some improvements so that this information is now printable, um, you can also search it as well, um, and that makes it a lot easier, um, for parents if they're searching for something, or if you want to be able to print it, it's just, it's in a great, great format for our families and our students. And the middle school one is just the same way with updated pictures, and we're very excited about where, where that is taking us. So thank you to Mr. Seaman, Ms. Starkins, um, our, our administration and our staff, uh, for helping bring that along, um, keeping up our branding, but, um, it, this is really something as, as part of our, um, our, our initiatives to welcome new students into the school district, this is the type of thing that exceeds even what private schools are being able to show and demonstrate to new families, so we look forward to being able to share this, um, when our new families are looking at our schools. Oops. So moving on to something really exciting that is happening, we spoke to you a couple of months ago about Assembly Bill twenty-two, which is the expansion for our Universal TK program. And so we're going to talk a little bit about what's happening, um, what it means to our school district, what kind of options do we have, uh, how this impacts our board policy, uh, enrollment, the logistics in the school district, um, what do we need to decide and when do we need to decide? Uh, this picture, if you know Melody, she was on our think tank, um, super smart and added so much when we had our think tank for the, uh, COVID nineteen work that we were doing, um, and boy, she's given us so many donate, donations, she's just been fantastic, so, and this is her daughter that will be entering TK. So here's just kind of a brief snapshot of, of what the cabinet was just looking at, um, with the legal requirements for Universal TK. And you can see here all the way to the left, that's our current school year, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and you can see that they've got a four-year rollout to it, and so what changes is the increase of time, so the increase over the years expands the offering for our four-year-olds by month. And so, the state has a four-year plan going all the way to two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, where that includes actually, um, uh, our three-year-olds. So, we've spent a lot of time looking at this, and I, I also, as a, as, as a teacher in the classroom, as a secondary teacher, as a mathematics teacher, Ms. Chisholm and I had an opportunity last year to meet with Annette Goldstein, Elizabeth Smith, Gina Schmidt, uh, just, you know, early childhood is, it's, it's, it's a completely different pedagogy, a different, there's, uh, a, a different curriculum, there's a, it, there's so much to learn about early childhood and the importance of it, um, and they were very patient with us as we spent a lot of time learning about what are the challenges are, what are, what are the pros, uh, we had a really great conversation about, uh, what are the needs of teachers? Um, we, uh, talked about the facilities that are needed, so we did a lot of that work last year, and we were really appreciative for the teachers, um, sharing that information with us. We're at a point now where, who are looking at this legal requirement, and I understand why they do this, um, every school district is a little bit different, every school district is in a, a bit different place, uh, and we looked at this, and we're ready to make a recommendation, and I'll share with you in just a few minutes, a little bit more about it, to excel this timeline a bit. We believe that this is such an opportunity for our school district to have our youngest learners, and have them exposed to our curriculum at an earlier age, that we believe that we have systems in place and supports that will provide an amazing opportunity for our TK program, and so we're looking at going as far as we can go to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, um, and incorporating these grade levels or these ages into our TK program. We're not allowed to do this yet. The state is saying we cannot do that at this time, we can, they're, they're not ready to, to move to, um, our three-year-olds being on a school campus, but we are allowed to make an acceleration, and the state is leaving it up to each school district to make their own decision, but we like the idea, and we believe that we have the space, but more importantly, we want to have an opportunity to provide our youngest learners with an amazing curriculum in TK. to provide our youngest learners with an amazing curriculum in TK. So one change here is, on this particular graphic, is that maximizing this timeframe. And you can see the state down here. The state has, this is their law. So the state says that this is an expanded offer to four-year-olds who turn five between September 2nd and June 2nd. Now, we can't change the September date. That is a state date. However, we did ask, because we thought it made more sense if we could incorporate the entire month of June. So we did get approval to do that. And so we could expand those offerings again from September 2nd to June 2nd to incorporate these three years into one year, which is as far as we could possibly go. We would be allowing this expansion with board support to allow as much as we can do for next year for our Universal TK. So our board policy currently has some dates in it that say August 1st to December 1st. So that's something that we would need to get changed, getting some board approval. We would need to change that requirement to the state dates. Then we would also get some board direction from you on how far you want the expansion to go. So will this impact our enrollment? Yes, and we're really glad about that. We want to be able to provide our young families with a TK program. And so if the board is willing to adopt our recommendation, that we would expect an increase in our enrollment. As the date ranges increase, going from that year, 1, 2, 3, 4, that our enrollment projections would increase. And if the board directs us to bring back a policy which is the most inclusive, which is what we're recommending, is going all the way as far as we can before that three-year-old group, that we would, we're looking at potentially adding two sections. So we currently have a section of TK at Hawthorne, and we have one at Horace Mann. We believe that with this expansion, that we would be looking at an additional section at each elementary school. So some things that we need to keep in consideration here is the facilities, the bathroom and the plumbing. We do need to ensure that the TK classrooms meet the requirements of having a bathroom that is attached to the classroom. We're looking at Hawthorne because that is a school that has not had modernization. So there may be some grandfathering rights there. But we would need to add some additional plumbing for our bathrooms for each of those two sections. So the section at Horace Mann and the section at Hawthorne. The credentialing is different for our teachers. As I mentioned, early childhood has a different concentration of teaching methodologies. And so we have looked, we've surveyed our teachers to see who's interested in becoming a TK teacher in the classroom. And so we have nine teachers that expressed interest. So we have more than enough interest, which we're super glad about, which is a good problem to have. There is, the credentialing is, it's a multi-subject credential. However, with that multi-subject credential, you need 24 credits in early childhood courses. And so we will be working with our teachers to provide that opportunity so that they can get those 24 credits to achieve the new certification for an early childhood TK teacher. Classroom size, currently, as I mentioned, we have a section at each school. So we have a section at Horace Mann and also at Hawthorne. Our typical size has been 21:1. However, we have some instructional assistants as well, depending on the needs of the students in the classroom. The state has a requirement of 12:1 during the first year, so that would be next year. But, you know, we also then, again, you add the instructional assistant with the credentialed teacher as well. We do not receive any funding. So this is, you know, important for the board, Mr. Roach, that, you know, we don't receive any extra funding because we're basic aid. There is a one-time implementation of a grant from the state for $100,000, but that's really more for planning, you know, and being part of, you know, building an early childhood program. But it's an additional cost that the school district would take on. And I think it's absolutely one that's needed and probably one of the most important costs in our district right now. So our rollout, if we were to go ahead and go with a two-year program, which is the maximum, of course, that we can do, then, you know, we would have, students would enroll in TK if they turned five by June 30th. And that's that big change to the date. So we know that there are many parents that are calling every day, and they want to get their kids in. And then how exciting is that, that we have that? And then that final, the 2025-2026 year, that is when we're going to be allowed for the youngest learners, which they're not allowing right now, but they will in that year. So we're considering that kind of a two-year rollout. We're doing the maximum that we can now. And then we would have in 2025-2026, that youngest group. So some board direction as we go forward, certainly with that board policy. There's dates in that board policy, which, you know, anytime something changes, that would have to change there so that we can update that policy. But it's going to be depending, getting some board direction from you on the rollout of the TK, if that is a recommendation that is something that you also agree with. And then we were waiting for final information. So, you know, this is something that, you know, we were waiting on the information from the state, which is oftentimes comes slowly. We received this information Friday about that last group because we were ready to go, we were ready to bring them all in. And so it was Friday where we got some official word that there was going to be a limitation for that last group, for the three-year-old group. So we're bringing it to you. We learned Friday, that caveat, and so we're sharing that with you now. It's good timing, but it's a bit of a rush. But overall, it's really good timing. Open enrollment, so for our new students, that's going to begin February 22nd. So that is the date of our next regularly scheduled board meeting. So what I'd like to do is if we get some board direction about changing that policy, we'd really like to, in a quick special meeting, be able to change that board policy so that on the 22nd, when we begin to enroll our new students and they're lining up for that opportunity, that we have our board policy in place with the new rollout. To allow for the age groups to enroll in the appropriate grade, you know, we recommend to you, just to provide that direction to us on the enrollment. I can go back to that date. You know, we could push our enrollment date, but it's, you know, people have been waiting for a long time for this date to come. And February 22nd is, we're going to have people lining up to be the first ones to come in to sign up. So we'd like to be able to get that done with your input tonight on that recommendation for our rollout. In fact, to get some input from you, I just want to put up this, this graphic and just open it up to get some initial thoughts. I know that we're not voting on this right now, but to get some direction on what you think, if you have questions, we'd be glad to answer. This is such an opportunity for our district that I know that we're all going to rally around each other to open and provide the best learning environment for our four-year-olds.
You want me, I'm on, so if you want me to start, okay. Well, I wasn't, I don't know that I had any of this information in front of me tonight so that I could really study it and understand it completely. And it comes, as you know, it's one of the things that I'd like to be able to know is to see this and so on. So I think that this would require some time to digest it all, so to speak. And I also have some questions. But I wondered, there was one thing that I didn't hear. The state says, how many kids per class was 12:1 in a TK class?
Yes, it is essentially what we do now. So the credentialed teacher would be 12:1, and then it changes actually to 10:1. But we have the same model here, and then we'll add instructional assistance.
More teachers than you think you might need. I don't know, but I'm just wondering.
We think that if we expand this to, you know, the three years to, you know, the maximum of what we can, we think that we'll go from two sections to four.
I don't understand the rationale, by the way. Every year, including two more months with new children. I don't understand that rationale, slowly rolling it out. I don't, I can't comprehend that. Maybe you can explain that more, Dustin, but I don't. If their kids are going to be, whether they're the first year or the second year, why are you?
It's the size of our district. I mean, it is, you know, if you think of some of the larger school districts and you're extending and you're expanding by those months, that's a lot, that could be a lot of students for a really large district that they weren't ready for. So this just provides an option for them.
I'm having trouble with that one. But, okay, so. So I wondered what the rationale was of rolling in the students in small numbers like that because it didn't make sense to me. And I'd have to see it graphically to see if I could understand it. That would be my thinking. I would like to say something about the fact that it's not, is it mandated by the state, the TK, right? This is mandated.
This is a mandated program, yes.
Unfortunately, it doesn't give the district any more money when they mandate the program. And it's going to cause, as far as the basic aid state that we are, going to change some of the money that we get. I mean, that's what I think. So that would be my.
It will.
And it'd make a big difference. Do we, we don't have any idea at this time, an estimate of the number of students that we may see, of course, we didn't get a study yet on our demographics. We have no estimate at this point, how many kids might enroll in the TK program whose birthdays are, they turn five between September 5th, 2nd, or is this, the first one is, well, that's the other one, September 2nd and February 2nd.
Right, this is always the most difficult to, when you're looking at projections for enrollment. Typically, when students are here and they enter kindergarten, it's a cohort model that we follow up as they go in grade level as they increase. That's a completely different model that the demographic people have done their study. It's always hard when you're, it's a first, you know, it's a family starting school or it's a, you know, family coming for TK. It's the hardest to project because they're not coming up from another grade level. But we think, we're doing our estimates, that we don't think we would have more than the four sections. So, which is, you know, we have two now. We've typically run two sections of TK that we wouldn't go over, you know, adding an additional to each school.
Okay, the other thing that causes me, just a thought that I had, just, you talked about having it at Hawthorne. And does Hawthorne have the space? If you had to start it like in this coming August, and you may need four other classrooms, four classrooms for these kids, where are you planning to? Do they have classrooms available right now with the numbers or?
At the most, we think we would just need one additional classroom at Hawthorne, one additional classroom at Horace Mann.
And they would be able to?
We have that space.
So if you're talking about one additional classroom, then you're talking about having 12 kids basically at each school. That's what I'm.
Well, it could be more, it could be 20. And then you'd have your credentialed teacher and an instructional assistant.
So the instructional aid, it becomes part of the classroom in the numbers? Well, as I said, it's a little bit premature for me to opine on this without looking at this and talking maybe with Dustin and really looking at it more closely because this is the first time seeing it. And so that would be my comments at this time.
Sure.
I never know to look here, here, here.
You can go, Mandy.
I feel that this is absolutely hands down a no-brainer. This is, it's, the way child and parenting trends have changed, I think at this time, it is screaming out for universal school before kindergarten. You know, there's a changing demographic from the 1970s when kids started to go to kindergarten. And now, earlier, as we realize that the first three years especially of child rearing is absolutely crucial in terms of the education they get. Hands down, this would be a fantastic thing to do pedagogically, developmentally, and also address some of our historic enrollment issues. We have, I think we identified that a lot of the families we lose go to another preschool. So they're already on a track to another trajectory, whether it's private school or elsewhere. I can see no reason at all why we wouldn't do this. I think that kids more and more are also becoming more, well, aside from the year where we were shut down for COVID, I think children, young children in general, have become much more mobile. If you look at even the trends of strollers, I mean, they've become, they've become very, you'll know this with four kids, they're very compact. They're made to, you know, to go into a car. You look at a stroller from 1960, it's this big metal thing because kids stayed home. They are used to being out and being out from the home, I think, at an early age. And I think that we can really give a wonderful, enriching, if not sort of lighthouse district offering to this younger cohort.
We totally agree.
Gabe, did you want to speak before I go?
Yeah, sure. I wholeheartedly agree with Dr. Stern, just from firsthand experience, having four young kids. I mean, we are one of those families that my twins did not qualify for a TK. So we are at one of those private schools because we didn't have an option. And we know other Beverly Hills families that are at that school that then have a very tough decision because now they've made all these friends and they're part of a community, and they have to pull away from that community. I mean, from like a recruitment of new families standpoint, enrollment standpoint, like no-brainer to get these to families in. In terms of how aggressive to be looking for guidance, like I really defer back to the administration. I feel be as aggressive as you guys think is prudent and can still, you know, provide the level of, you know, service to families and our children that we want to in the city of Beverly Hills. So, but I think I totally agree, absolutely no-brainer. And, you know, it would have made a big impact on my family and many of the families around us had this kind of program already been in place.
And the expense as well.
Oh, the expense is, expense is tremendous. So even though we missed two, but don't worry, I have two more kids. Thank you.
Noah, would you like to go next?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Dr. Stern and Mr. Hulini. I would say, though, we recently went through a interim budget, and I know that this was coming down the pike. So I'm wondering, as far as preparing facilities and making sure that we are funded for this, how are we looking in that department in order to accelerate?
Wade, do you want to talk a little bit about this? We, as I mentioned, it's, you know.
You can answer it, Michael.
Yeah, well, I mean, the answer is, you know, for us, as far as Hawthorne is considered, you know, is, you know, it's a school that's been grandfathered in when it comes to some of the plumbing requirements that we would need for that, you know, if it's grandfathered in, you know, having a bathroom, you know, right next door isn't required for a school like Hawthorne. We're looking into to ensure that that's still true. But Horace Mann, for example, is a modernized school. So we would need to make sure that the additional plumbing is done for that additional section. So we would need to make sure that the additional plumbing is done for that additional section.
So you would open up the first section of Hawthorne. Would you plan on opening up, opening up, if we accelerated, both of the extra sections this coming fall?
We'd like to. We would like to.
Then what is entailed in the bathroom? You know, the bathroom compliance issues at Horace Mann, has that been looked into? Do we know the timeframe on that? Did that have happened?
So, I mean, we, that's something we need to look at is the plumbing and the systems that are in place. And can you use the system that's in place? And so we need to do that. We absolutely need to make sure that we can get that done.
And I also understand that for El Rodeo, we've actually, I believe we've built this in to the program for the future.
Yes, that's my understanding too.
Yes. So I would be fully support of the administration's call on this. I would walk cautiously regarding just, I'd like to get some feedback when this comes back about the impact on the budget and the timeline for facility reaction to this decision. So I don't want to send anything into a tailspin. I don't want to, you know, I, so if we only opened up one class this coming, you know, one extra one this coming fall, because that's what we can physically do and do the second one the following, I just, we have to, you know, we don't have that information tonight. So I support it, Michael. I really appreciate Dr. Stern's comments. And I think that it would just get a little more details before we change the policy.
Sure, that's not a problem at all. We're happy to work on that. Like I had mentioned, you know, we at first thought that we would be limited to just moving, you know, the deadline by just a few months, couple of months. And so that changed Friday, so that kind of changed our plans and our recommendation as well.
Yeah, and I think, I think as people have said before, this is one of the only proactive courses of action that we can take that change our enrollment. You know, there's very few things that we can control to change our enrollment. This is one of them.
Eli, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to agree with Mrs. Marcus that there definitely has to be some review of it before a more accurate decision can be made. But my initial knee jerk reaction is that it's a fantastic program to have. It would have been great if I were able to take advantage of it, but it's great that we're having it now. And yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Can I just make one additional comment before we move on?
But I want to speak as well, so go ahead.
I just wanted to say that it doesn't mean that I'm, the fact that I'd like to just learn more about it. I think it's a great program. That isn't the issue. The issue is that, I mean, I cannot look at this right now. And I'd like, as pointed out, I'd like to see it more out where I can really see the product itself. And that's what I really, so it's not that I'm, of course, I'm in favor of it. But I just don't think that I could, if someone would have asked me to vote on it tonight, which thankfully we're not going to, I could learn more about it to begin with.
Right, and another way to look at it too, though, is we're just expanding a program we already have. So there's, you know, we, there's a curriculum in place. There's amazing things happening in Ms. Goldstein's room and Ms. Smith's room, just amazing things. And it just, it just would be expanding that same program to students that are younger.
All right, what I'd like to say is, I think, you know, I love this idea, as you know. I really am a big proponent of early education at our public school, at the district. I think it's a great way to increase enrollment. I think it's a great way to build community in our city and at our schools because so many young families have kids early and they're looking to meet the other families that live in their city and their neighborhood. And it's such a great way for everybody to form those relationships. And I think they become lifelong relationships. I can speak for myself that the families and friends that I made when my kids were at that age are some of my best friendships that I've had. And I think it really does build community. I understand that this is an extension and in the short term, this is a great way to take that step. I like to think of it in a much bigger way in terms of how do we have a bigger plan, like a more comprehensive plan of an early education program for BHUSD. What does it look like in the short term and the near future? And how do we roll that out and grow in all aspects, from the classrooms, the teachers, what the programming is, how many classrooms, what the facilities are? You know, all of those things to consider. I know when the 7-Eleven committee was speaking, one of the things that they had suggested as an idea is having Hawthorne down the road as an early education center, which I think is, I've really latched on to that idea and think it's such a fantastic idea. And based on your timing of 2025 for preschool for the three-year-olds, that's, you know, ideally when Hawthorne will have been, I mean, El Rodeo will be done. Kids will be moving into there. So I think now is a great time to start having a bigger, bigger planning. And I'd like to see how this fits into that bigger plan, to think of it in a more comprehensive way. I understand you have a timeframe that you're trying to work under in terms of enrollment right now. I think the thing that's concerning for me or the questions that come up is, what does that look like financially today and down the road? Because you're committing to those classes being now part of BHUSD. So how do we afford that, you know, in a three-year, five-year, 10-year? How is that, you know, for our school district? What's the financial impact for that? Also, do we have the facilities? Do the classes have to have not just classroom size and bathrooms? But are there requirements for the yard space that each class has to have? Do they have rules around that? Do we have that space? And just so that we are looking at it in a little more long term, so we don't make this decision today and then find out in a couple of years that we really backed ourselves into a corner when we could have had a more comprehensive, thoughtful rollout. So my suggestion would be that perhaps we have a study session in the near future, to your point, where we can look at not just adding the classes today, but try and get. I'm sure you've done some of this thinking already, but what does it look like?
And we also host the preschool program for the city. So we know that we have the yard space. We have the classroom space.
But to add the classes, do you have to have more space when you add classes and students?
I mean, as our guess, it would be, at this point, the, we don't think it would be any more than adding two sections to have a total of four. It might be three.
And so I think, you know, that would give Rochelle the opportunity to look at it in the, you know, overall in that context and to also look at it a little more long term. I love the idea of partnering with the city for now, with preschool, and looking at opportunities there. So I would really encourage us all to, to take this on as a bigger project and not to hang up where you are today, but look at that as your first steps, but keeping the eye on what's the big plan down the road because I think there's so much opportunity for all the reasons that everybody has already said. Rochelle? Exactly. I think so too. I think, the other thought I had, and now it just escaped to me about that, it'll come back to me.
Yeah, and the community will pay for preschool.
Oh, I know. This was my thought. Is there funding for facilities? I know we don't have funding because we are basic aid, but I thought I had read that there's funding available or that you can apply for.
The funding right now that they have for us is an allocation of like planning. So it's a hundred and, maybe it's a hundred and $20,000. It's a one-time implementation plan. It's a grant that you can apply for.
Is it for facilities such as remodeling the bathroom?
You could probably use it for that. It would probably be used up pretty quickly. But, but yeah, there's some things that we're looking into as far as, you know, how we could utilize that one time. That's a great, great idea. That's a great thing to look into is developer fees.
I would also suggest, so let's, as next steps, my suggestion would be to prepare the board policy so that that's ready for our next meeting and set up a meeting with the board if everybody agrees to just talk about this program and the board policy. Does everybody agree? Noah?
Yes, aye.
Okay, all right, then I'll let you continue on with your presentation.
Great, so actually, and I'm going to take a break and come back and I'll kick off the conversation with COVID-19. So I'll hand it off to Eli right now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Aimer?
All righty. Let me pull it up. Excuse me, looking up, there's a bug in the light up there and it keeps making noises and I finally figured out what it is. But one moment. Yeah, it flies around every once in a while. But all righty. Board report, it's not too long, but I do have stuff from every school, so that's pretty exciting. So as always, let's get started with the high school. So starting with the past, I have an update on robotics. Build season is going extremely well. We're getting very close to finishing. This robot here is in no way close to being done. And this was actually done about last week or last weekend. So a lot more progress has been made since this video was taken. And, but this is just kind of a preliminary idea of the interesting drivetrain that we have. I'll start the video because there's no sound and I can kind of narrate. And so what we have is called a swerve drive, which the, each wheel both spins this way and also rotates laterally. So it allows our robot to spin while. It's a really neat feature and it's kind of choppy at this point because this was our first driving test of the whole year. But watch it go down the hallway and as it's moving forward, it's continuing to spin while maintaining its position. So this is a really advanced drivetrain that a lot of teams aren't, don't usually utilize. But it really is a major asset to our robot and to our team. It's something that we started doing two years ago and we have not thought about going back since because we're able to do pretty cool things like this. And it's extremely fast. We've got some brand new motors on there that we had to order very far in advance to ensure that we reserved some. And so once we have everything more fleshed out, I will send you or I will bring another video at our next meeting to kind of give an update as well. On to the future, Singin' in the Rain. This is our major musical of the year put on by our theater group. And it's going to be at the Saban Theater, April 1st and 2nd at 7:00 PM and April 2nd and 3rd at 2:00 PM. So that's always a very exciting thing. It's great that we're able to put on the whole production again. I know last year we did one outside in the patio of the Science Building, right outside there. And that was extremely, it was a lot of fun, but this is getting back to how things were normally done with a major production at the Saban Theater. So it's very exciting. The, I know that the dancers and the singers have all started rehearsing and they've been practicing for the last month or so. And recently, the members of the Pitt Orchestra started practicing as well. So the Pitt Orchestra is also a collection of students and professional musicians that they bring in. So the music as a whole should be, should be really fantastic. We have a lot of talented people who are performing. Class of 2023 sees candy fundraiser. So this is a fundraiser for the class of 2023. We're looking to have a lot more fundraisers than ASB this year because one of the shortfalls that we've had in the past is each class is supposed to raise money starting their freshman year so that they have a large surplus by the time they get to senior year that they can put towards subsidizing the cost of prom because prom is very expensive. We both want to make money off of it while also keeping tickets affordable for students to attend. So this is one of those fundraisers. It'll be running from February 3rd to April 1st. And the link to order is in the bio of the Instagrams of the BHHS class of 2023 or ASBBHHS, and you can order online. And so it's really simple and a certain percentage of the proceeds from it does go directly to this class. Something else exciting coming up, something that we just approved to the, in the consent calendar is Dance Company 2022 has their major performance, March 17th, 18th, and 19th at 7:00 PM. So that will be at the Saban. And the tickets will be on sale at bhhs.bhust.org/danceticket. So I'm hoping that everyone is able to attend. I've been able to, I've been fortunate enough to go in the past couple of years. It's always amazing. Almost all dances are choreographed by students. And I know how hard they work to ensure that the show is really fantastic. Other news, there is a band concert, a high school band concert at Horace Mann, February 24th at 7:00 PM. So I'm hoping to see you there. On to BVMS, in the past, they had a winter spirit week. Here are some of the days that people dressed up. They had pajama day on the top left, followed by hat day, then blackout day, then blast from the past, and then anything but a backpack day. Spirit days are always great ways to just improve school spirit and make coming to school a lot of fun in these times. So it's great to see them doing some inventive ones. In the future, we've got Valentine's Day grams at the middle school. They will be for the February 11th and 12th at lunch. They're being sold by ASB. And the high school is doing something similar, but it's great to see that they're starting these kinds of events early. I remember doing candy grams in middle school as well, and it's always a great event, raises a lot of morale as well. On to Hawthorne. For Holocaust Remembrance Day, fifth graders were working with the Butterfly Project. They met via Zoom with the children of Holocaust survivors. They watched the film produced by the Butterfly Project. And then they are also working on a national collaboration with the Butterfly Project to produce 1.5 million butterflies to commemorate the 1.5 million deaths of children during the Holocaust. So it's a very important thing that these things are remembered so that they do not ever happen again. So it's fantastic to see these, this fifth grade class being proactive in that. They also had a theme week slash Jersey Day, and here are some images from that. Lunar New Year was observed. Students took time to learn about Lunar New Year as a whole, the history behind it, and some of the customs associated with it. Makeup holiday parties. So a lot of holiday parties were pushed because of COVID. So they were doing some makeup holiday parties for the students there. And the student is having a lot of fun decorating a tree. The 100th Day of School, I wrote 110th Day of School, excuse me, but it was the 100th Day of School recently and it was observed at the elementary school. So students practiced by counting and making necklaces with 100 beads and such. So here are some images from those festivities. Black History Month. So at Hawthorne, they have a kind of roadmap on the wall where they recognize black Americans who are currently making history. And so they'll have one for every day of the month. This is just a short video kind of displaying the wall itself, and it is all. So the rest of the wall will be filled in as the month progresses. Thank you, Bombs. So students and parents at Hawthorne, thank you, Bombs, their hallways for their teachers and their admin and their staff, just to tell them that they're doing such a great job and to ensure that they keep it, keep it up. On to Horace Mann. For the 100th Day of School, students dressed up or were aged up. Their Mr. Bugbee dressed and aged himself up to look like he was 100. And here are some students with a filter that ages them. I will admit, I was slightly taken aback when I first saw these and I just think they're, they're pretty fantastic.
That's how I feel.
Also, see some more, they were making necklaces out of Fruit Loops with 100 of them. And so they had little charts so that they could properly map out if that they had enough Fruit Loops to make the necklaces out of. Also Lunar New Year, a little display with some art made by students. Some students dressed up, just general Lunar New Year festivities. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Mrs. Marcus?
As usual, you outdid yourself. It was fantastic, and I can't believe what's going on at the elementary schools and at the middle school. I mean, they're so active and they're so into it, and I just can't believe the activities that they are putting on for the kids, and it really is meaningful, and thank you for presenting it.
Of course, thank you.
Uh, as always, uh, the thank you so much, Eli. It's so awesome to have like a vantage point into what's actually happening in our students', you know, lives and what they're, and what they're doing and what they're commemorating and all that stuff. Like really, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, and no further comments, but keep up the good work. We enjoy it.
Um, Eli, that was terrific this week. Um, it's really nice to get a good close-up look at what's going on in our school district and to remind us that we do have students doing things all the time. Uh, we don't really get to talk or see about that as much from our perch. Um, this kind of brings it down to earth for us, um, and I, and I do appreciate that. And I wanted to ask, are you, uh, going to Ventura in March as well?
Sorry about that. I unmuted on my laptop for some reason. Um, but yes, we are. So our robotics team, thank you for reminding me about that because we just approved that as well this evening. Um, our robotics team has their first regional competition, uh, in Ventura in March. I believe it's the, the first week of March, and that will be very exciting. It's an overnight competition, and we will be competing generally. It's around, um, against 60 other teams from both across the state and across the nation, depending on who wants to travel that far. They believe they have reduced the size of the competitions this year, so it's around 30 teams, but still it is going to be a great time, and there's the possibility that we will win awards, um, that will qualify us to attend the world's competition as well. So that is the, the ultimate goal, and we are continuing to work towards, uh, ensuring that we, we continue to succeed.
Well, I know we're going to meet again before that, but I just wanted, because it's on the agenda, I wanted to bring it up and wish you, uh, wish the team on behalf of the board, uh, best of luck.
Thank you. And, and of course, there's still the, uh, open invitation if any board member would like to stop by, uh, over the weekend, one of our weekend days or during the week after school. We're working every day after school until 6 o'clock and weekends 9 to 5. So please, uh, let me know if you'd like to stop by. I can show you around.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Rochelle.
I just want to make one more comment that crossed my mind just now about your...
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. No one can hear you at home. Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I keep, they didn't have it before, so...
I know, I'm sorry.
Um, I just would like to make a comment about something that crossed my mind. Um, yeah, at the beginning of every meeting, we have a highlights from the, uh, from some area of the school, and I would, or from the teachers presenting and so on, and I need to tell you that this reminded me of your bringing up the school highlights in general of what's going on in the school, and I really was just, that was a thought that crossed my mind, that, that could be in that spot at any time because you just bring out what's going on, so.
Thank you, Eli. Um, I really always look forward to your reports, and I, I definitely plan to come by and, uh, see the robot. What's the robot's name?
We usually wait to name it until, uh, we get closer to competition, so currently there is no name, but if you would like to submit one, uh, we can take it under review.
Alright, I'll have to come see. Thank you again. Would you like to pick back up?
No, well, I think, um... No, I'm sorry that I...
Sorry, I stepped out since we were, we closed since 2 o'clock.
Eli just finished, so...
Yes, and thank you for your report.
Um, did you want to pick up on your presentation first?
You know, I thought we'd come back to it, um, as soon as it's on the agenda again for the COVID-19 discussion.
Alright, so we'll move forward to business and finance, and...
I want to make a, uh, motion for the rejection of claim number 601732.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments or discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Oh, I have, I have something. Um, this is another instance of, uh, because I believe it is, it does pertain to, uh, a closed session item and the claim is not listed, and I don't have the information to, to go off of to properly vote. I will again, uh, abstain from this one.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with Eli Raymer abstaining. Um, may have a motion for item 13B, presentation of the 2021 audit report by Moss Levy and Hartzime LP.
So moved.
All those in favor? Uh, any discussion? Sorry.
Well, they're, they were presenting too. B is the presentation, C is the vote, so...
Oh, that's right.
Sorry about that. Alright, we will move forward with our presentation. Thank you, Wade.
Happy to present, uh, Mr. Hadley Hugh tonight from Moss Levy. Uh, so the district is required, uh, by code every year to do an independent audit or have an independent audit. We open up our books. Uh, actually, the auditors come twice a year. They come in spring and they, then they come in the fall, and they examine, uh, all of our financials, uh, including in the associated student body, uh, uh, information and the, the general fund, the cafeteria fund, uh, to make sure we're in compliance. So tonight we have a presentation of our audit, and then afterwards we'll answer any questions the board will have. So I'll turn it on over.
Can, uh, everyone hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Hadley Hugh. I'm from Moss Levy and Hartzime. I'm here to present the June 3rd of 2021 year-end audit. And, um, we, during, uh, this year, we, we were here for, uh, like about, uh, three, two to three, three weeks to perform our year-end audit. Uh, we were here, uh, actually in the district, um, uh, during May to do our interim work, and then we come back in, uh, November, and October and November to perform our final few work. Um, we issue three, uh, audit report that we ran the, uh, opinions on. Um, the first one is our financial statement. Um, we issue a modified opinion on the district financial statement, which means, uh, it, we believe the number is present, uh, fairly, and, uh, the statement is present accordance to GAAP, General Accepted Accounting Principle, and, uh, a modified opinion meaning this is the best opinion that auditing may receive from outside auditor. Um, and there were also a federal award, uh, report that we issue. We also issue a modified opinion on the, um, federal award in compliance on the program. Uh, we test, uh, few programs this year, including the, uh, National School Lunch and the, uh, Coronavirus Relief Fund. Um, the other report we issue is the, on the state compliance. So the state requires to, um, perform various, uh, state program, including attendance, instructional minutes, car size reduction, et cetera, and, um, we have no finding. Uh, we also issue a modified opinion, um, on the state, uh, state program. There were no disagreements with management. Um, there's no major issue, um, during our audit. We don't have any difficulty encounter in performing our audit. Um, the district staff is, uh, very helpful. Whatever we need, they provide, and any question we have, they answer our question. So there's no any disagreement or, um, any dispute as far as like, uh, proposing, um, audit entry or, uh, answering question. Is there any question?
Mr. Raymer, would you like to start?
Uh, no questions from me.
Mrs. Marcus?
Uh, yes, just, uh, a couple of comments, um, Hadley. Um, I was, uh, going through the, um, uh, the, the audit, and again, it's very complete and so on, and I went, well, thank you for waiting around to make the presentation. It's quite late, but I did want to make a comment about something because I did ask, um, I keep forgetting. Uh, I did pre-, I wanted to, uh, thank you for sticking around for this, number one, and I thank you for the audit, and as usual, it's very complete. There's a, I did ask, um, Mr. Roach about a comment or a, an item on there that I saw last year, and then again I see it this year, and it was a suggestion, uh, that, uh, there was something about the payroll audit that, uh, an internal control, and I wondered, I saw it last year and then I see it this year, and I, I said, why is it there two years? Why wasn't something done about it? But according to, uh, Mr. Roach, Wade Roach, that they've been trying for almost two years to get somebody to fill the position that could handle that job. He's assured me that they have somebody now. I will not see this one, though I don't know if I'll be here, that I won't see it next year. So I just would like to make that comment. That was the only thing that I had to say about the audit. So thank you again, and, uh, and great job.
Mr. Levy?
Um, thank you for sticking around so late to do this. Appreciate the report, and, um, thank you for going on the record and saying that you found Wade easy to work with. I hadn't heard that from anyone else, so... Just kidding. Thanks, Wade.
Uh, thank you for your comprehensive report. Um, I have gone back and looked at it, and it looks very complete and comprehensive, and thank you so much.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you, Hadley. Good to see you again. Um, I, I wait, in my recollection, this is the, uh, smallest findings section that I've ever seen in an audit report. Does that, uh, coincide with what you've experienced here?
Um, yeah, we would like to get rid of that one little audit finding that keeps coming up, and as soon as that's gone, we expect to have an audit next year that has no findings. That would be our goal.
Excellent. I'm really, I'm really, um, encouraged by the direction, um, that the district has taken in these arenas to rectify the myriad of findings that, um, plagued us in the past, and it wasn't just this single one that Mrs. Marcus brought up, but it used to be, um, several. So, um, we are cleaning, cleaning up our, our act, as we say, and I appreciate everybody, uh, who helped make that so. So, thank you.
Um, I have no further comments, um, except to say congratulations, Wade, on your, uh, glowing reviews.
So I, I definitely just, I just want to shout out to my staff, the staff of Business Services. They work hours and hours and hours, work with the auditors to pull reports and pull files, and without their support, uh, you know, the, the audit couldn't get done. So thank you, staff.
So I will...
I agree.
...for the acceptance of the 2020, 21 audit report?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with provisional vote from Eli Raymer. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, oh, thank you very much, Mr., Mr. Hugh. I hope I said that correctly. Thank you for waiting and thank you for your report. The next item on the agenda is, uh, may have a motion for 13D discussion. Actually, this is a discussion item, so, um...
Discussion and approval.
Yep, discussion and approval of revision to the Facilities and Construction Committee guidelines. May I have a sec-, may I have a motion?
Um, I will move, uh, approval of revision to the Facilities and Construction Committee FCC guidelines.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Um, I'd just like to say I'm very, um, appreciative that this was on the agenda tonight and for the, uh, President Wells, uh, and the board's support in adding a student board member, um, to this committee if they would like to join. Uh, I will definitely be taking advantage of that, uh, and attending and hopefully speaking at the, um, next Facilities and Construction Committee meeting. Uh, and I look forward to, to hopefully in the future possibly seeing similar amendments to, um, our other subcommittees so that, uh, student board members in the can future, in the future can have the, their, their pick of them.
Thank you, thank you for taking your, the initiative, Eli. I really think you're a great role model as a student board member, and this is just another example of that. Rochelle, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that we bring him in on the Facilities and Construction Committee, but we may have a student in, in the future years that may have interest in the finance, and we might want to think about, uh, the finance committee also as a possibility for their involvement and participation in, in the committee.
Mm-hmm. Uh, you bring up a good point, Rochelle. Um, I would like to add on to, uh, an agenda item in the near future to talk about board policy as well as our committee policies, because we haven't had an update on that. I know, Dr. Berg, that you were working on, on that on some level, but, uh, perhaps we can have some board members, uh, and I'd leave it for a discussion item that where we can have some board members assist on that or have a, a ad hoc committee with the board to address those board items in terms of committees, uh, the board policy, and also the board, um, the board governance.
Yes, and we are working very hard to try to keep that at the forefront of what we're doing. Um, and so, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that and look at the board bylaws and, and, uh, make any changes.
Right. I know you don't have enough to do, so I thought perhaps a, a ad hoc committee of the board, um, to do a pass on that, I think would be a great idea. I think earlier, Gabe, you had even expressed interest yourself, and I know as well it's something that I'm interested in. Um, Eli, it'd be great...
I'd be interested for sure.
Alright, well, um, I'll table that for now. Go ahead, Gabe.
I read the bylaws. I have a whole bunch of notes ready to go. Eli, thank you again for showing that initiative, not just on behalf of yourself, on behalf of all future student board members, too.
Terrific. Noah, did you have anything to add?
I, I just wanted, I think it's great that you were chasing this, Eli, and, and got it on here. I, I would wonder why anybody would want to actually voluntarily attend more meetings, as we have plenty to attend in the course of a week, but you already got into college, so I think you maybe have freed up your schedule.
He's still a very busy guy. I tried to be with him all last week, and I couldn't get on his counter.
I don't know when he gets time to do what he does, the, the genetics and everything else.
Alright, well, I'm going to call for the vote.
To go to meetings for him, too.
Yeah. A renaissance, Renaissance man. Um, so I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, the motion passes 5-0 with the provisional vote from Eli Raymer.
Okay, I would like to, uh, call for the ratification of amendment number two to the agreement with twining incorporation for construction materials testing and inspection services for the...
Elrodeo seismic retrofit and modernization project.
I'll second. Any discussion?
As I understand it, this is something that we're voting on that was, uh, necessary, but it was already, uh, approved by the superintendent, as I remember, something that was, came up and it had to be done immediately, and you were able to take and step in on this, right?
That's correct.
And I, I think I had asked about the, um, the number of inspectors, uh, listed on the proposal, um, as far as the necessity for that number of personnel on proposal is that. It was explained to me that, uh, yeah, it's required. Um, is that, oh, hi Pam. Is, is that a, um, DSA requirement?
It is a DSA requirement. Um, each of those inspectors has a special certification, and that's why they need so many.
So, so are there instances where one person has multiple certifications or that doesn't exist?
Yes, that does exist, and it is up to, um, the DSA inspector and the project manager to coordinate that, and they do that whenever possible. So just because these, this many are listed, doesn't mean that they all would be used.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, the, uh, motion passes 5-0 with the provisional vote from Eli Raymer.
So I'll make a motion for approval of amendment three to the agreement with twining for the construction materials testing inspection services for the ER seismic retrofit modernization.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? Alright, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with the provisional vote from Eli Raymer.
I'll move for the, uh, ratification of a proposal with William Scotsman Incorporated to knock down and return the three MNO department modular buildings at Elrodeo School.
I'll second.
I have one question on this. Um, is that the end of all the modulators?
Is that the end of all the modulators now?
Well, I, I, Elrodeo has, has offices for the constru-, construction...
I thought these were the ones because it says Elrodeo.
I thought these were the ones because it says El Rodeo.
Mrs. Marcus, Mrs. Marcus, these are the portables that were housing the MNO offices. Those offices have now been moved up to the high school, and they're beautiful. You should go and see some of those. And those have, those three now have been moved off that site. We still have office buildings. There were, we're moving them off as, last week, two more went off. So I'd have to, I think we still have two left to go.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Pam. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with the provisional vote from Eli Raymer. May I have a motion for the approval of Amendment Thirty Four to the Agreement for Architectural Services with DLR Group?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
Well, my question on this is going ahead with what we know about the, the finances so far and, and doing this. So I'd like a little better explanation because.
Mrs. Marcus, as I presented in the memo that I sent to the board, I tried to answer all of those, all of those questions. The design, this is the design of the rest of the high school site, just the design, not construction. And this design is included in your current budget. In fact, the budget was seven million for that, for this design, so it's actually under that budget. This was part of the recommendation that the bond manager made in the October twenty-sixth board meeting, October twenty-first study session, that you continue with design to give you maximum options as you deliberate on how, how you're going forward with the bond program.
I want the public to hear that, the reason that I asked the question. I want the public to hear the discussion about it. I mean, I, I got the memo from you, but I wanted people to hear what this was about. And I think that was the only, but by bringing you out and asking you the question, it would be brought out that this is more just a design, that it's not just to have it ready.
That's correct.
Pam, I have a question.
Yes.
When I look at the Schedule of Values, my question is, since this is a lump sum contract, are we committed to the full amount? Or can we, if we decide that we stop after the CD phase, are we committed to the full fund, amount of funds?
We are not. We are only committed to the work that is done.
Terrific, thank you. That clarifies a lot.
And I, thank you. I just, I had asked earlier on, I think when this came up back in October or November, I, I had asked the management team about the DTSC site requirements and about bifurcating the site work to separate out those requirements. Pam, can you confirm what DTSC's response was to that inquiry?
We need to get DTSC permit for the whole site. So it's, we have been.
And the whole site includes the front lawn, right?
Correct.
So it's everything, front lawn, basically south up until Olympic?
It is completing the design for the entire site.
Okay. So, so just so my colleagues are again aware, I did make an attempt to try to bifurcate this, the, this load of work, depending on the future directions and decisions that are made, so that we can do the most important things upfront, kind of front load some of the project related to at least DTSC and their requirements. But it seems that they are not budging on that, and they are treating the entire site as one entity, which is why, so the community understands why we have to complete the design phase of this at this stage. So thank you for answering that.
And you also would want to complete the design phase so that you can get market prices. And then you, because right now you're, you're working on estimates.
Right.
Go ahead, Gabe.
Thank you for being here, first of all, and staying till nine o'clock to answer these questions. So as Ms. Wells just asked, so if, if we stop the work somewhere in between, we're not going to be held to the full amount of the contract. But since it's just a lump sum, how would that, how would that work? Because it's not necessarily based on hours, right? It's.
It is. It's a lump sum based on the work. So we will be paying as, as the work is completed, they will be submitting invoices, and we pay on those invoices.
So on, on page four of the, of the proposal, there's the phase, and it's broken up by percentages. Is that what you're referring to? Like, like so, based on how far we are through that, then, you know, that's how they're going to bill?
Yes.
Roughly?
Mm-hmm.
But thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Go ahead.
I just have a question. I know you, you talk about the encapsulation of the former Venico site.
Yes.
So in terms of the, I know you're talking about designs and providing those, but in terms of the work for that process, where, where are we with that? And how is that impacted by Amendment?
Before we can, yes, before we can encapsulate the Venico site, this design work has to be done because there's grading that will give us the dirt to fill in the, the hole.
To actually complete that and to.
Right. So the design of the site, which is, includes a grading, has to be done before we can restore the Venico site.
Is it just the design that you need to have done before you can start that? Or do you need to actually start other work?
There would be other work based on the design, yes.
Before the Venico site?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Rochelle? Aye? Motion passes five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. Thank you very much. Thanks for staying so late. Okay. Our next item is the COVID testing program and protocols. I think we decided we were going to discuss that first. And I think, Michael, you asked if you could introduce that?
Yeah, we just have some data that we'd like to share. And you should have a copy of that data in front of you. And we spent a lot of time as a team just to start looking at that data to share this and provide this with you, kind of where we are now, the masking updates, some testing updates, an opportunity to analyze some of the data that we've shared, and then, you know, next steps in looking at if there's going to be any revisions to, for example, the testing program. So just kind of where we are now, you know, we're in a really good place. You know, if you think about before Omicron, we had about two to three cases a day, kind of ending Delta, like, like right before winter break. Now, after the surge, we're at about four or five per day. As you can see, the total active cases in the district were right at twenty. So we're just in a really good place, and you know that those numbers have been coming down each week. We did take an opportunity to just provide you with some information. This was, you know, the information that we just started to make some calls, just so that you had an idea of other school districts, both private and public, who is masking outside, who continues with their weekly testing program. We thought it's just a good idea to check around with our neighbors. It doesn't mean to say that this is leading us in any one way or another, but we're often asked about what other people are doing at private and public schools, so we're sharing that with you. Also want to share with you, and, and this has been on the news, so this isn't any new news to you, but what we're hearing from the LA County Department of Public Health, changing their mandate for outdoor masks. And so right now, they're using some data that they're sharing about the hospitalization numbers. And when they drop below twenty-five hundred for seven consecutive days, that they would drop that, it would be more of a recommendation than it would be a mandate like it is now. And I just put on here, just to show you, just as of today, that the hospitalization rate is at twenty-seven hundred. You know, our guess, you know, doing this for two and a half years and working with the county, that we believe that they'd be making a change around the fifteenth of February or so, is our, our best guess. As you know, the, you know, there's always the different guidelines from the, the state to the county. The, the state does not have any outdoor masking mandates. It's just through the county. And then also, the state has, they have no masks indoors for fully vaccinated people, except for schools. So, you know, again, schools are highly scrutinized, and there are some extra measures in place. So when we start to hear some of the unmasking that's going on, schools are still a place where that's being considered still. We did look into, you know, some of the consequences. There's been some articles that have been in the newspaper and on the news as people are, are beginning to push back. And so there are some fines. We're not aware of anybody that's been shut down, but there have been some fines and citations for some of our schools. And then obviously, something else to consider as we have a discussion is just our current MOU that we have. So I wanted to just share with you, I'm just going to walk you through some of the data that we have. So this is our, our vaccination rates. So if you see on the left-hand side, as of the fourth of February, and we have this set up so that we have our, each school and the number of students in each of our schools. We did pull staff out separately. We did not list staff by school because many of our staff members are moving and going to other schools. So it would be hard to do that. So we have the number of people, which is our in total enrollment for students and for staff at thirty-eight eighty. And then next column is the number of people that are vaccinated. So again, you know, this, we're basing this on what people have shared with us, and so we have to just keep that in mind, that people have been really good in our community about sharing this information. But I think that it just gives you a good overview of what's happening in our community. I, it was brought up just earlier before from a board member asking about this, the vaccination rate between students and staff. And so this gives you kind of an idea of where we're at. The bottom graph, just, this is just a glance. This is coming back after winter break till now. And if you look again, it's by school, and then we have our staff number. So if you look, for example, the total number of positive cases that we've had, like at the high school, since January ninth is a hundred and twenty-six. And that next column is the total number of the one hundred and twenty-six positive cases. Sixty-two of those students were vaccinated. So just gives you an indication that about half were vaccinated and tested positive. So that gives you that for each school and also for our staff. And so it's really easy through this analysis. It's, it's difficult oftentimes to compare one school to another, but we wanted to give you as much information as we could in these charts that we've been collecting. It's often come up, too. People have asked with the testing program, how long does it take? And so we were able to determine that our PCR testing, that weekly testing for our unvaccinated and our random sampling of our vaccinated students, about ten minutes at the middle school and also our elementary schools, and about fifteen minutes at the high school, of course, due to the size where students have to walk. We did put in there that this is a safe assumption, that our COVID MD, our dragonfly testing, correlates to more symptomatic cases. This is the rapid antigen testing that we have where, you know, people come in and they're, usually they're a close contact or that they have symptoms. We have determined that according to our data, that there is just minimal difference in the viral load decreasing to a negative test with the same timeframe for vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I'll show you that in just another slide. Another interesting point that we had is just that the, the PCR testing that we're doing, that weekly testing, caught about twice as many cases as our rapid antigen testing. The transmission seems to be minimally impacted by our vaccination status, which is, you can see that up on the right, left-hand side, the first chart. And the board policy as it stands allows for any percentage of randomly selected vaccinated students to be tested. But keep in mind, we're also testing weekly band athletes. So even people, we have a lot of kids that just voluntarily get tested. So moving on to this next chart is just, just, we, we just broke this out with as much data as we possibly can. And I just want you to look at, starting over here on the left-hand side, it's the same with our students and then our staff. And on the left-hand side, we have our COVID MD, the dragonfly. Again, this is our rapid antigen. This is our, usually people that have symptoms or if they're a close contact. And we did, again, the, for example, looking at the high school with fifty students that were identified, this is over a period of four weeks. So this is also our, our Omicron surge as well. So you can see that in that first week back after winter break at the high school, we had fifty students that were identified as positive through the rapid antigen testing. Twenty-six of those students were vaccinated. And then the doctor now testing is that PCR weekly testing. And so during that week, we had twelve students that were identified as being positive. Three of those twelve were vaccinated students. And then the other home section, just so that you're aware, you know, we have to report where somebody reports to us where they're positive. So when it's other and home, we don't normally accept the people going to other places and bringing back their test results. But there are many people, like over a weekend, or they were on vacation, and then they go and they get tested, and then they report that they're positive. You know, we indicate that they were, had a positive test from an outside place when they're letting us know that a student or staff member has been testing positive. So then we've got our total positive in the middle right there, which is just above the yellow total. And then again, we're trying to put in as much as we can so that you can see the total number of students that were vaccinated out of that positive. So for the high school, again, seventy-three total positive with our rapid antigen and our PCR testing, and thirty-five of those cases were vaccinated students. So again, you can start to see where that falls. It's really interesting data to see where that falls. Over on the right-hand side, these are our positive cases that, with the new health order, that is, we're allowing students that come back. So it's testing negative on day five, six, seven, or eight. So I thought this was really interesting data that, for example, those, those students that are coming back at the high school, you know, testing negative on day five after being positive, identifies thirty-three students. Again, twenty of those thirty-three were vaccinated. And then we have those students that tested negative where it was longer. So it was, you know, days nine, ten, eleven. And which, the percentage of those students testing negative on day nine through eleven, that that would be the, the percentage, you know, of, of those students that are vaccinated. This is, you can see this is through the surge, so this is through these four weeks. These are our last two weeks that we had, same setup with the rapid antigen and the doctor now. We, if you see on the right-hand side, this is where we have results pending because we, those students that haven't tested negative yet for days nine, ten, or eleven, they're not back yet. So those results are pending. The main takeaway here is just, you know, when you look back at some of these totals from this slide, from our coming back after winter break, and the total positive, you know, two-hundred-and-ninety-one, and then the total positive for our district, including staff, ninety-seven, and then fifty-seven and thirty-six. So it's, the trajectory is in a really good place and, and shows that, you know, we're, we're doing well as a community and as a school. So thought that that was important for you to be able to see. You are aware of the testing program that we have in place and our elementary fully vaccinated status. I was answering a parent email today, and our elementary students, just right before winter break, if, if it was one of the early adopters to getting the vaccine for our elementary students, they would be considered, you know. They would be considered, you know, at that point, you know, we, we have students now that are becoming fully vaccinated. So those early adopters, you know, were, you know, at a point where, you know, we were still testing all students. Because, you know, we had high number of kids that are in self-contained classrooms for the whole day. And so, you know, we were testing a hundred percent of those students. Now that we're getting more and more students that are vaccinated at that age. You know, there's some considerations that can be made with the testing program that we have in place. So again, the policy was created before Omicron. So it was right before Delta and served us well. One thing that we also struggled with before, because it was just, we were just so outnumbered by the number of cases. Is the students that had COVID nineteen within the ninety-day period to track and manage that. Was really difficult because we had to get proof of when somebody had COVID nineteen in the past. And so we're at a different place now because the cases have come down so that we're able to ask for that information. And we believe that we can manage that a lot better now when somebody tells us that they've had COVID nineteen within the last ninety days. The other considerations that we are still continuing to test through the health order banned athletics trips. You heard Mr. Smith talk about getting some testing before taking a trip with his students to Anaheim. And then our asymptomatic cases and, you know, looking at those cases, again, this is, you know, looking at our rapid antigen testing. And then our PCR testing. So, you know, there's a lot of considerations to take place with our testing program and we are open to having that conversation with you today. So if you have any questions about how the data is put together, we've spent a lot of time as a cabinet really synthesizing this data that we have. We're really proud of the work that we've done. I don't know anybody else that's kind of analyzed like we have, but we're, we're willing to look at some further study. But we're, we're able to at least be at a place now in our district where we're able to make some assumptions with the data that we have. So we're, we're pretty excited about all the work that it's taken to collect all this information.
Thank you for all of this work and for all the work that you and your staff have been doing.
Sure.
Through all of this.
And hats off to Mr. Halimi and Ms. Starkins. I know they've been working on the survey portion. So I'm happy to kind of turn that over and for, for an update. But, you know, there's a lot of good work now and also moving forward.
Would you like to go, Gabe?
Well, first I just want to acknowledge the work that's been done. Thank you so much. I mean, it's, it's. You started by saying that, you know, we're in a good place and I would agree. I think we're in a really good place. And I think a lot of that is a testament to, you know, the hard work that the administration has done, the sacrifices made by everybody involved. And they're, you know, as we know, we've talked about, there have been a lot of sacrifices made. So first I just want to start by acknowledging that and thanking you. I also, just before we jump ahead to the survey, I do want to acknowledge, you know, all the parents, all the teachers, students. That spoke tonight from their hearts, very passionately, very eloquently. I continue to get emotional thinking about and hearing all the stories of, you know, what has been having, happening. The effects that, the preventative measures that we've had in place had, has unfortunately had on children. I think that's, I think that's undeniable. I, I did take, I did take note and was a little bit kind of taken back by, you know. There, there were members of our administration, there have been teachers, there have been others that said, the kids are fine, they're resilient, they're cooperating. And, you know, all of that may be true. But just because they're resilient and they're cooperating, it doesn't mean that they're not also suffering inside. It does not mean that they are not scared. It doesn't mean that they don't fear, you know, the repercussions of potentially not cooperating, right? They're just children. And I think we heard that, you know, loud and clear from some of our parents and our students, but tonight. I also just want to say that since the study session that we had, there have been a number of people from the community that have also reached out to me. On, I'll call them sides, both, you know, sides of this. Some saying that all the preventative measures we have in place are there for a reason, they're glad they're there, et cetera. And then others that like from the, you know, a lot of the parents that we heard from tonight. And I'm just, I just want to stop and acknowledge how appreciative I am that we're having a discussion about this in our community. This is not an easy thing. People are very emotional. The temperature is high. And I think we're able to actually have, you know, pretty cordial, you know, for the most part, conversations about this stuff. And I, I think that's really important and needs to be acknowledged. We have, as we've highlighted before, we have incredible talent as part of this community. We even heard from a number of doctors tonight. I mean, that's how lucky we are that we have real specialists, psychologists, psychiatrists that are all weighing in on this. So I'm just, I'm just thrilled that we're having this conversation. So thank you. I could jump straight into the survey, but I just wanted to, before we do that, kind of re-ground us in, in why we're looking at the survey, okay? I think what, what we, what we talked about.
I'm, I'm sorry, Gabe.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sure.
Can we address Dr. Brighi's presentation before we go too far afield because we need to go around the horn?
Oh, yeah, yeah, please, please.
And then we can hit the survey?
Yeah.
I guess we can start with Eli or.
All right, you can start, Eli.
Thank you. I've just got one question that's been raised to me a couple of times by students. Is just how random the selection for testing is of vaccinated students. Because some people were tested the first two weeks and then have not been called since. Some people have never been called. Some have been called every single week. And they were just curious if it has, I, I doubt it has, but if it has essentially fallen into a similar rhythm with the same people being tested every week. And just how those random people are selected.
Yeah, so we just use a randomizer. I mean, hundreds of kids are, have been tested through the weekly testing. You know, and again, some people do it voluntarily and we still collect their information and, you know, and it's changed. So like with the, with the surge coming, we actually had more students as the health order also required the, the, the weekly testing through banned and athletics. So, you know, some people will have complained to us that they've been tested every week, even though they're vaccinated. And then some haven't been tested at all. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a wide variety. Sure.
Okay, can you please pass this message on for me to all the students? If you feel like you are being tested every single week and you shouldn't be, please send us an email. Email us at covid@bhusd.org and we will take care of that. It's likely that you're not aware that you have fallen into a couple of different buckets. One is banned. A lot of banned students don't realize that actually under the health order, they're required to be tested. We emailed them, we notified them, but they perhaps missed that one and there's, there've been a lot from the district. So if you could pass that on. The other is high-risk sports. So as Ms. Ellis will tell you, with kids coming in and out of sports, we do our best to stay on top of that. But some weeks they're doing it, then they get a sprained ankle, I'm out of the season, why do I keep having to test? We don't always have the most current rosters. So it's likely that they've been left on a list potentially. Or actually that they're meant to be testing every week and they just don't know the reason why. So vaccination status is not the reason why you get tested or don't get tested. Yeah.
Thank you.
Michelle, did you want to go?
Well, I just want to thank Dr. Brighi for this very, and the staff.
Your turn.
Thank Dr. Brighi and the staff for this very comprehensive data sheet. I think that it does warrant, from what we're seeing, warrant looking at how we're testing and who we're testing going forward. Because the numbers are dropping and, and I think we need to revisit this. So that maybe we don't need to have this vigorous, as vigorous a testing schedule as we've been having. But that it's more designed to pick out or to catch or to just to test the kids that are, are close contacts, the kids that are. Being, that have tested or come down with some symptoms and so on. I mean, I think we need to look at what we're doing and, and, but not to, not to weaken the system. But I think that, I think we can begin to evaluate the program and change it a little bit.
Oh, there he went.
Amanda, Dr. Stern.
You know, I think that since we are now finding since Omicron that people are getting it whether they're vaccinated or not, right? They, they seem to have gotten it. And it, and it's hard, it seems there's no rhyme or reason. But it really does bring up the logical question of, you know, why would just unvaccinated kids be routinely tested? I'm just saying, I mean, frankly, I feel like the contact tracing and the tracing and the testing that, that is done. Has been a huge disproportionate burden on you guys and I'm grateful for that. But I just wonder if, given the fact that they're, at least with Omicron, there's little differentiation between who gets it. And I think you even said that, you know.
We did, yeah.
Throws into the face of, one, do we test at all? Is it, is it necessary, especially asymptomatic? And frankly, is it, you know, is it discriminatory if in fact it's an equal opportunity transmission? I'm just saying.
We, we also noticed, just kind of on that same line, is that, you know, there, there was some preconceived notion in the beginning. That, you know, perhaps those people that were vaccinated would test, we, that there'd be, you know, more people that would be testing negative on day five. You know, because they're vaccinated. Well, you can see that that's just not true. And we were able to capture that information to show that it, that really isn't a distinction on whether you're able to test on day five, which is pretty quick after having Omicron. So that, we found that to be very interesting too, that there doesn't seem to be any correlation between whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. As, as it relates to how, you know, when you test negative to come, you know, to come back to school.
And then another thing I want to say is I, I was very moved and personally impacted by all of the comments from the public comment tonight. Not only the, the kids, but what the parents had to say was very, I, I resonates with me completely. And I think I am sensing and, and I understand perhaps the frustration that like the last study session we had. We really identified that there is a lack or we're growing, increasing intolerance for all these things. And we can keep saying, you know, it was a productive conversation and we get you and all this. But it is time for us to make some changes, in my opinion. I know that there are two camps and both are very vocal. But I can tell you as someone who works with children every single day, and I have for like the last twenty years throughout Los Angeles. Without a doubt, children are suffering. Without a doubt, they are suffering. And we're talking all ages. I'm saying, I'm saying that children last year who had their first debut into school for kindergarten. Were either masked, you know, when they went in person and/or they were on Zoom, which is horribly inadequate for a kindergarten student and preschool. So they are suffering and have suffered. And then kids who are older, you know, continue to have physical. I, I don't know how personally buy in that it's actually toxic. I mean, I don't know those studies. But I, I do know physically it is extremely uncomfortable if you want to enjoy sports. And so there's a whole throng of kids who otherwise would enjoy regular organized sports during lunchtime. But because it's just too much of a pain with the mask, they're resigned to sitting and staring at their phone. And that is a tragedy. And it really, you are only a child or a teenager once in your life. And that, those are the most memorable, impressionable, formidable years. And something we need to make the change and not just have a conversation, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Mr. Margot?
Thank you. And, and Gabe, thank you for seating the floor over us. I know you have a lot to say. So this particular chart that you have up, Michael, is very enlightening.
If, if you look at the, the, one more over to the right there. That column really speaks to age and effectiveness of the vaccine. Forgetting the severity of the disease, right? We're not, we're not, this chart does not talk about how severe the disease is in people that do catch it. What it's saying is that adults, the percent of adults that are vaccinated that are catching it is very high. The percent of high school students that are vaccinated that are catching it is high. Not that there's a lot of students doing it, just the ratio. As you get younger and younger, that obviously drops off very rapidly to the tune of, you know, in the last pot, in that last chart on the bottom. You have zero percent of vaccinated kids at the elementary schools. You have thirty, then it jumps up to thirty-three at the middle schools. Now, we know the FDA hasn't give full authorization over the age of sixteen. And I know that that is affecting some of the numbers. People are hesitant until it receives full authorization. There's other reasons that they're hesitant to get the vaccine. But what we're showing is that it, the vaccine may be preventing serious illness and hospitalization, which is fantastic, which is what most vaccines really do. They, they never say that we're going to prevent you from ever getting the disease. Nothing is a hundred percent. But what it, what it does beg the question for me tonight, and, and Mandy has brought it up and Michelle has brought it up, is the testing program. And I think what you've shown is the value of the testing program to this point. If it weren't for the testing program, I don't think our numbers would have gone down this much. I don't think people would have been as conscientious about it. I don't think we would have been able to catch things and keep down. But now that our numbers are this, are this suppressed, it's time for us to look at the testing program. And say, what elements of this can we remove and still keep a part of it intact to keep the, the community safe? Right? That's, I'm not saying we need to eliminate the testing program. I'm not saying that. It has value because it shows us that it has value. But I would also look at the same data, if we were to follow the next week, right? Take this, whatever you have now, the next week or two, and remove the mandatory testing part or the, not, you know, the weekly testing part, excuse me, not mandatory, weekly. If we remove that element for two weeks and watch the numbers, I would like to do that as an experiment. And I would like to be so bold as to use this as an educational opportunity for those that are studying data and statistics. To look at this, incorporate real-life scenarios into their studies and say, let's see what happens. Let's take a sampling and see what happens. In two weeks, we keep, we keep the required testing where, where it's required by the county, whatever that minimum is. And we say, okay, we're going to take off the weekly testing for a couple of weeks, see what it does to the numbers, okay, to the case numbers. If they go up rapidly, we understand that testing was doing its job, holding the water back from flooding the town. If not, then we can then reevaluate it. And we designed the testing program originally to be reevaluated at some point during the pandemic. That was the whole point of it. So I, I say kudos to everybody involved in executing this testing program. In maintaining this testing program, but now it's time to alter the testing so that we could take that element out. And as far as outdoor masks, because I know that's a hot topic tonight. And I appreciate the parents and the teachers that spoke. And I don't appreciate some of the slanderous remarks that some of our community members made toward this board. I think that that's unnecessary and it comes from an uneducated standpoint. Because some people do not understand how, how we have to address these things. And I applaud Gabe for bringing this up to us and forcing this conversation and making us look at what can we do to take this pressure off of our students? But we don't need to do it by insulting the board because the board has been meeting almost every week to try to rectify these situations. And I, and I applaud this board for the work that they've done and the administration. And, and I, I would almost wish that all of those people that spoke tonight would take those comments to the LA County Department of Health. Those are the ones that need to hear it from real people and not just from school administrators about what's, what's happening to the students. And of course, I have to say, I'm not wearing one tonight because I'm at home, but masks are terrible. Nobody likes them. Nobody wants to keep them on anymore. Everybody would love to go back to a world without testing and masks. I don't think that's even debatable. As far as, as far as outdoor masking, I think, Michael, you hit on it earlier. I think by some point next week, LA County will remove that requirement. I had said that a couple of weeks ago. I said, just give LA County a couple of weeks and you know they're going to follow in suit and start pulling back on these things. So I don't think it's a, I don't think outdoor, and we could wait till next week. But I don't think it's a fight that we need to force. I think it's going to happen naturally. And we can, we can eliminate that and, and that will take a big, big relief for our students. Because my daughter does not want to wear a mask anymore. Nobody's kid wants to wear a mask anymore. And I absolutely understand that. So thank you for giving me my time.
Thank you, Noah. I agree with many of the comments that my colleagues have made. I, I believe that we have been reevaluating this. I I believe that we have been reevaluating this as we have been moving along and and trying to address COVID-19 and all within the lens of trying to keep school open and safe. And I think that we've been very successful with a lot of work by everybody, extra work and dedication to make this happen. And I think we're at a place now where we can reevaluate. And I think I'm hearing that from all of us, that everyone agrees that now is the time to reconsider this. And the next question is, so what are we going to do? My recommendation as a starting place is that we, the masking outside, as soon as we get that order, that we are not having masks outside and that we have the minimum testing that we can have. That would be.
Sorry, I interrupted. If anyone wants to wear a mask, they should be allowed to.
Absolutely.
Without any bullying because there.
Right. I agree.
I want kids and families to feel the same. I want children and their families to feel safe to wear a mask if that's what they want, even if the outdoor mask is gone, and there should be no bullying. There should be a zero tolerance policy for that.
Right, I agree. So those are my comments and anyone else? Eli?
I would agree about the outdoor masking. I think that we we established some some facts about that at the last study session. And I don't think anyone is really disputing those. So once the county, I'm fully in favor of once the county removes that requirement, that we do the same. In terms of testing, I'm not sure if I would like at this time to shift to a model of the the minimum that we can. I think that the testing program we have in place, we have talked about how robust it is and how fantastic it is and how it is one of the most comprehensive testing plans out of any school district. And I think that we should maintain that as it has been proving successful, as shown by the the data, even if case rates are decreasing. I still think it is pertinent that we keep that that same level of testing up just until it drops a little lower for for my liking, the the amount of positive cases. And if we have the funds for it, I do not see any harm with continuing that testing.
So Eli, do you have a threshold where you think that should occur? Because because I
Ran that over in my head over and over again, and I I don't know if there's ever a proper threshold, you know, to say, you know, the county sets their thresholds, but for us as a district, should we have a threshold where we say, okay, we can roll back the testing?
I know what you mean, and I think us as a district, I think we've hit a place that I'm getting near comfortable, say, maybe ten like ten or below at all schools, which we are almost, almost there. But I think the the real consideration we have to take into account is not just the positive cases within our district, but the positive cases of the county, which I know used to be a factor for the opening of schools last year. And I think should still be used as a metric for the continuing of our testing plan because people in our district don't just interact with people in our district. So we have to keep in mind that tests, that case rates are still relatively high across the county and across the city and such. So below ten in the district, I would be okay. But I think I'd like to see some numbers from the county before I can give a threshold in that regard. So in terms of district cases, I think that we're we're pretty much there. But I would like to to see the the county as a whole.
The other thing that I would like to add is that this is a dynamic process and this is a dynamic program. So if cases are moving up, if we have some unforeseen surge, then we would reevaluate this again. And it's not that we said we're not having masks or we're doing minimum testing and we're now never going back. If if the situation changes and and Eli brings a big good point, not just in our school, but if we're starting to see it around us changing, we have to be able to react. And I think that's been our philosophy with this all the way around. And I think we should make certain that we continue to hold that, that we will continue to react or be proactive, whichever the case may be, to what the surroundings, what the data is showing us around us and at our school.
And of course, we have to consider our partners with with you.
We 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 have to recognize there's language involved, and we would have to make sure that things aren't done adversarially.
Rebecca, would you like to add something?
I think that there are people in the community, students and family alike, who really have benefited from getting tested when they feel symptomatic. And I think that that has alleviated a lot of anxiety, and I really hope that that continues indefinitely because that's a great service for, you know, people who really want to know. So I, you know, I definitely think that that should remain.
So to your point, Mandy, that could be a simple, simple factor of the same thing you brought about with masks outside, is if people still desire to get tested, we have that option.
Right.
So but we we'll never know unless we do some sort of, you know, a scientific experiment and see if 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 we roll it back, if it affects the numbers. If it doesn't, we're told one thing. If it does, we're told another. We've only had it, right? So we've only seen it go kind of up and down with the surge in Omicron and Delta. But we, I think there's an opportunity for some more information gathering and and some conversations. But I think we should look at, like we originally said, like you alluded to, Mary, is that it's it's a flexible policy that we we can now look at the the new data and say, okay, it's time to flex. And I took too much of Gabe's time, so.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
It's our time.
Go ahead, Rebecca. She might have to make a few points.
Please.
Firstly, if anyone's looking for the email of the county, we've been such great partners of theirs in sharing the feedback. We would like to share some more feedback with them, and maybe they would like to hear from you, too. So on the third page of the health order, you'll find an email for them. Feel free to use that because we hear your feedback. We've been really, really respectful of them and not directing concerns to them and answering parent questions. And we feel like we're getting to a point, Dr. Breggy, feel free to jump in if I'm inappropriately overstepping here, where the community should know that they have access to it. It's publicly listed in the health order. And so if you want to speak to them directly, that's the best way to do that. The second point would be around what is the testing that we're talking about right now? So I just want to make sure the community is really clear. Exposure testing, and if you are symptomatic, you're testing. That's not on the table right now for the discussion that I'm aware of, that I'm hearing from the board. So I just want to clarify that, and please correct me if I've misunderstood. Okay. So what we are talking about is the weekly PCR testing that was initially created, as Dr. Breggy outlined, before even the Delta variant. He brought to my attention, he's like, no, it was the end of September. And he was spot on. So the transmissibility of the virus then compared to now and how how vaccination impacted that is considerably different. But I I want to really acknowledge the work that our testing partners do in all of this. We have a great relationship with both of our testing companies. And the PCR testing company, Dr. Now, have done a sensational job at prioritizing our district. Any changes that you guys make, I mentioned this at the study session, we really, out of respect to them, should give them a one-month heads-up, right? So if if you said tomorrow, I want to try it for two weeks, it would be in a month's time, and things are going to look very different. Now, that's not saying I'm taking it off the table. I have a great relationship with them, and I could call them and say, hey, what do we think about this? What can we do? But to remove their business for two weeks in a row and all of those staff, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anyone else has suggested this. I'm just pointing out, they have a long waiting list. They have a long waiting list. Testing is super scarce, as you guys are aware of. We're very lucky that we have two different testing programs. My concern around removing it altogether for a trial, just to put on the table as part of this discussion, would be, number one, not being in any kind of breach of contract. Number two would be, if we did have a new variant, Mrs. Wells, as as you said, and we had to ramp it back up, could those people who have secured other jobs around the fact that they know that on Monday they're at one school location and and we're not going to, maybe if we if we tapered it out, maybe it was one school one week, another school the next week, and you do it every second week, or we test half the school one week and half the school then. Maybe there's something around that. But I just wanted to to let you guys know, I I haven't had that conversation with them. And if I'm their employee and I and I think I have this money coming in, and then you say, it's going to be gone just while we do a little experiment, and then, but we might, we might need you back if there's a new variant. I I might have already got another job somewhere else. Or the company as a whole may have said, let's take the next school district who's on our waiting list. I'm I'm not saying that that's, anything is for sure. I'm putting it out there that they're not conversations I have explored with certainty until I had direction from the board and from my superintendent to do so. So I just wanted to be fully transparent with with you and the community that that's, it's not immovable, it's just, that's where it's at.
Right, thank you for bringing those considerations to us.
I want to respond to a couple of the things that my colleagues have said here before we move on to the survey. I I appreciate what Mr. Margot is is trying to get us to do, which is really ground us in the data that we have in front of us, which is very rich, again. Think of the administration to like, see how we can, how we can start to move the ball forward. I just, I I I want to kind of challenge us in a healthy way, if I can. This, this data definitely supports that we we did have a surge and the surge is going down. And I do believe from the bottom of my heart, I don't want anyone to get me wrong. I believe from the bottom of my heart that what, what the the steps that we have taken has helped lower this surge, right? The testing that we've done, the the mandates that we've had. The question is, how effective was that? And what was the cost that we paid, right? What was the cost? And I don't mean financial cost, I mean the cost upon our children, right? Uh, is it okay if I share my screen?
Sure.
So I'm blocked.
I might add that, you know, the surge, the numbers are going down outside of our school as well. So it's not necessarily that our, what we've done. But what we have been successful at, without a doubt, is that we've been able to keep school open and we've been able to keep kids safe. And that, that has been our goal.
Absolutely. So just as we were sitting here, I was thinking about the surge we probably saw and how it came down. And I just Googled, this is New York Times data that anyone can pull up on Google, to see like what happened over the last six months in Los Angeles County, right? Los Angeles County, as we know, the L.A. County Department of Public Health has had some of the most restrictive provisions of anywhere in the country. Today, we saw, what was it yesterday? It was New Jersey and Delaware, I think, that lifted all school masks. I mean, it, it, right, like every state, every county has been a little bit different. I think it's safe to say that L.A. County has probably been the most restrictive, right? So this is what it's looked like in the county of L.A. So I would just say, it would, it would be very interesting to like graph this like against what we saw in the rest of L.A., okay? But other data that you can just pull up real quick, if you're curious, let's look at Texas, where they don't have masks in schools, right? Wha- what does that look like? So this is just a different, this is, so this again, just, this was Los Angeles County. And now this is all counties in Texas. We see a very similar surge and very similar come down. Same thing in Florida, see a very similar surge, very similar kind of, when I'm, so what I'm trying to kind of challenge us with is, how much of this is what we're doing? And how much of this is the natural evolution of how this virus works? How much of this is actually within our control? So even though I I really do applaud us for doing everything that we feel like we need to do to protect our children, we know now that there is a cost. We have very accomplished doctor that's sitting next to me. We've heard from our community. We know there's a cost. So how do we reconcile all the steps that we're taking versus what is going to happen regardless of what we do? Okay, because that that's real. So even though, Noah, I totally agree, this data is really important for us to look at. There's a lot of tests that we can do internally. I want to encourage us, if we're going, I mean, let's not just look at ourselves. There is tons of data around the state, around the country, and around the world on how this works, right? And I think what we generally find is places that are generally masking and places that are not masking are having the same, same like, I don't know what you call it, but, you know, same general infection rates are happening in different places. So I want to challenge ourselves not to like, even though I'm very proud of the work we're doing, you know, at the, some of this is just how the virus works, right? So with that said, to just re-ground us from the last study session we had. After we had a discussion, we grounded ourselves in some facts. We, one of the, one of the statements that I think Mrs. Marcus made, that I think was really on point, was, you know, we, we don't know what we don't know in terms of how the community really feels about this. We've heard from part of the community. We haven't heard from everyone. I, just to restate, we are the last line of defense. I I I cannot, I I do not want to wait for the L.A. County Department of Public Health to tell us when things are okay at this point. We have enough data. I feel like we need to be leaders. That is, again, this is me speaking in my voice. I don't speak on behalf of the board, if anyone's listening. But I feel like we have to take a real leadership position here, like enough is enough, right? But I think before we can do that, and before I can politely and gently push the rest of my board members to set this kind of policy with me, I think we do need to understand where our community stands with this, right? We're not going to, you know, we're, we're not going to go rogue. We want the support of our community with us if we were ever to take that kind of action. And I think that's where we decided that we want to do some kind of survey. And so we broke off as a little subcommittee, Mrs. Starkins and I, and we invited Mrs. Marcus and Eli into a Google Doc that we were going around. And I thought that we would now share some of the survey questions that we, we just kind of were sniffing back and forth. Ms. Starkins is much, much better at this than I am. I started with some statements that weren't, were not so good. But so what we, what we did was, we came up with fourteen different statements. We we kicked around the best way to do this. And what we thought, Ms. Starkins, please come to the microphone, correct anything I'm saying or just feel free to chime in. Let's, let's, let's kind of tag team this.
All right.
What we, what we did was, we came up with fourteen different statements, of which we just, we we came up with fourteen that covered, I think, different sentiments that we were hearing. We would like to narrow it down to, I think, five. Like, we we have fourteen, but I think that's a little excessive. I think we can get it down five, maybe, you know, a couple more if we need them. And then we let people react and say, hey, I I strongly either disagree with the statement, which would be a one, or you can strongly agree with the statement to a ten or anywhere in between. So we really got a sense of how people, you know, feel about the statement that, you know, we're, we're making. I think we start with some kind of like a neutral paragraph that kind of grounds everyone in terms of why we're doing the survey, why this is important, you know? And then we just get into the questions. And so I thought, what what we thought we would do tonight is share some of those questions, get some feedback from the board so we can kind of figure out which questions we want to use, tighten up the language, and hopefully get this survey into the hands of our, of our stakeholders, of our community ASAP.
Can I say something first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, please.
I am going to say, yes, absolutely, we want to listen to our community and the feedback from the parents. But first and foremost, I want to say that we are for the well-being, the achievement, the thriving of the children. So I'm I'm just going to say that because, yes, you're taking a pulse of of parents. But, and we care very much, obviously, but the kids have no voice, as you have pointed out. And they will comply and and say, oh, I'm fine, and and not be, you know, and maybe not be fine, so.
One hundred percent. I could not agree more. Thank you for that. So I think what we, what we wanted to do was start with some questions specifically for parents, but then adapt those questions and ask the same questions to students, similar questions or whatever, I mean, whatever is appropriate for them. And also maybe a a series of questions for staff. We didn't want to write all of them at once, so we just started with the parents first to kind of, you know, get some kind of consensus on what the questions are we even want to ask. But then we would take the same questions to Eli's point at the study session, have questions for students, have questions for staff as well. But yes, I want to, I mean, I mean, to me, to be very clear, I already have all the data that I need. I'm already, like, I'm already, whether the, I mean, of course, we want to bring, of course, I would like to know that the, that the majority, supermajority, whatever, parents stand with us and students stand with us. But I think we already have enough data here, to be honest. But I'm hoping that once we have this data and we understand But I'm hoping that once we have this data and we understand where our community stands on these issues, that, that the, that, that the rest of the board will feel more confident in terms of taking a, a more firm stance on these issues, vis a vis any other, the government bodies that we, that we may be talking to.
What is the timing that you're thinking of for this? Because, right. Oh, no, not just that, there's that as well, and the timing. I, yes, there's, there's both of those things.
I'll let, I'll let Ms. Starkins talk about time. I don't know how long it takes to send out a survey through the systems that we have, so.
I'd rather not send it tonight, I could send it tomorrow.
No, not tonight. No, 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 I didn't think it was going in the next day or two.
I'm, I'm taking to the very extreme of what the question was. It, it can happen very quickly, but in, in terms of, I would need very clear direction on exactly what we were sending.
Is it possible to, I mean, I hate to say this, but can we take these questions with us on your Google Doc and then give feedback?
Yes.
And then let you guys then narrow that down?
If you guys are comfortable, I'm comfortable. Let me just highlight an example of some of the questions, just so everyone has a sense, like, real quick. I think there's a couple of areas that generally we would want to cover with the questions. One is the area of masks, right? Like, how, how, how necessary do we feel the mask? Should people be able to make their own decisions about whether they met, wear masks? Outdoors, indoors, you know, et cetera. Reactions about the testing, we've all talked about the testing. How much they feel that the testing is like, at this point, necessary? A piece of feedback that I got that I had not heard before, after the study sessions, I got a number of, a few parents that emailed me that they like kind of acknowledged that they're not concerned about the short-term effects of COVID, but the long-term effects of COVID are unknown and therefore they're still very concerned with their kid, you know, potentially being infected. Okay, that's reasonable. How many, so, so we have one question in here about how concerned are you about like the long-term effects of COVID? So we tried to touch on each one of these, I think we can narrow that down. I mean, if you guys are comfortable, we can narrow it down and, and, you know, give the board a chance to review before we send out.
It's either way, you can either send it, share the Google Doc, let everybody get their feedback and then you can narrow it down and go from there, or Rochelle has a comment. Go ahead, Rochelle.
I have a question, and this is something that I was just thinking about.
You want, you want to, you want to turn your microphone?
Forget that, I don't, I don't have that. My question is, what are we trying to really ascertain with this survey? Are we trying to ascertain whether we don't want the kids to wear masks outdoors? I mean, I think that from this standpoint, we will, most people would agree with a lot of these statements. Like, I am concerned about my child being infected with COVID-19 through the long-term medical. I mean, that would be a concern. I mean, I, I'm wondering, at this point, what is the purpose of the actual survey? Are we looking to get the feeling of the community about no masks? Are we, are vaccination, not vaccinations, uh, testing? My question is, what are we looking for in the survey? And I'm not sure. All of that. But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how these questions address that, that's what I'm trying to say.
And to Rochelle's point, I think we should only be asking things.
That we can take board action on, right? So the thing about vaccination requirements, we haven't discussed that yet. It's not, it's not a mandatory thing by the state or the county. I think we can shelve that question at this point. I mean, if you want to get a feeler for what, but I think too many questions muddle the goal of the survey.
Yes, as I said, we're going to narrow the number of questions down. I really think.
Not just the number, though, the subject matter. I think to Rochelle's point, we need to focus on.
What we want an answer to.
So that you get a clear picture of what we're taking action on.
Can I actually step in? I actually, for a doctor's thesis, had to create what's called a Likert survey, and that's exactly what this is. You have a, you know, zero through 10, but there's, ideally, you have like four different themes. And then you create quest, right, you like, you create questions around those themes. So you have subscales. So in fact, having more questions actually makes it more robust than having six, because then it's not valid about what exactly you're testing. So for example, if you have, you know, a set of questions, you have five questions that address the comfort with the mask. You have another theme that addresses how fearful people are of death from COVID. Then you have, so you have, you have four different themes, so you have 20 different questions. You scatter those questions around so that only you, who, the person who created it, has a key that, that has a code for which question goes with which of the four themes. But then you have subscales, for each of, each subscale is for each of those major questions. And you can do all sorts of amazing things with software that I have, actually.
I would love if you would help us with this, but I, there's no pride in terms of how we did this or whatever. We just opened up a Google Doc and started throwing it around.
Right. I want to clarify something. My understanding is that you're really wanting to take this survey to take bolder steps than the steps that the county will rely, like the minimum testing or when masking goes away. That you want to take a survey to understand it.
Yes.
The bolder steps. So I think there's two different things. Can we agree that we want to remove the masks as soon as LA County Department of Public Health allows us to? Is that, I don't feel that we need to do a survey for that. So I, I wouldn't even ask that question necessarily, because I think that every, we, we were at that place before and everybody would gladly go back to that, I believe, most people.
And they can wear masks.
And they can wear masks. So my understanding is, it's for the minimum things that we can do as a district in terms of testing or masking, or what, what, what that testing looks like, are things we can do right now. And I think that it sounds like we have fairly good consensus about what that looks like. Or you can come back, Rebecca, and let us know what limitations or recommendations for the testing part of that. But we all want to, to reduce the testing and reduce the masking. What I'm hearing you say is you want to do a survey to get a temperature or read on attitudes or opinions about going beyond that.
Yes.
So that to me is what your goal, to answer Rochelle's question, is for the survey.
My question, I expressed what I mean, I, I'm saying, what is the, what are we trying to do? To get the temperature of the community and our stakeholders? Or are we trying to figure out, do we want to go against masks, vaccinations and testing? And then I don't, the only question I, I haven't had a chance to read them all. I would like vaccination requirements to be enforced on all students. Well, that's a very easy question to answer. Yes, or I don't feel strongly, or you could do it in levels. But I would like, I would like to see that masks are eliminated outdoors now because of the, of the studies and so on and so forth. I don't, I don't, I don't, you asking questions that sort of, the current, well, here's the current weekly PCR testing program makes me feel more comfortable. I, well, that would be approving the, the testing program.
Right.
But the, there's.
Well, you could be asking for both of those questions, actually, you want to know.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that we're looking for answers to masking, testing and vaccinations. That's what I'm looking for.
I, we, we have statements regarding all of those.
But the, well, the, the, you're asking him in such, the, the, the way you're going about it, I think there's better ways of just getting down to the nitty-gritty of it when you ask the question. That's my, just my personal take. That's as far as what I see, when I see the community and what they want or what they don't want, I think that's what we want to find out. But I don't know, I, I don't make questions for surveys. I just know how I feel about surveys and whether, is it doing what it's supposed to be doing? And I don't know, and I, and I'm being very honest, I haven't had a chance to look at this very carefully.
Why don't, why don't I just send these to everyone? And we can collect feedback right there in the Google Doc. But just to be very, very clear, I do not, we are the last line of defense for our students. Whether the LA County Department of Public Health wants us to wear outdoor masks until tomorrow and then we can stop, or they want to carry it for two years at this point, I want to make the best decisions for our students irrespective of what any governing body is telling us to do. I want this school district to take a leadership position and do what's best for our students. We will figure out, of course, we will figure out what the repercussions may be. We will do a risk analysis. But if we believe that the data is clear, if our parents, if our students, and you, you know, if, if everyone's standing with us and we all agree, then I think we need to take clear and decisive action. And I think this is one, this is but one data point that we need in order to move in that direction.
Can I just make one suggestion, though? Because I've done 360 surveys before. And it's really important that they, you know, they go out to stakeholders at the same time. So, and not just doing one group over another, because there could be, somebody might think that there's some bias in, you know, so it's, it's, everything going out at the same time is just a suggestion.
I think, can I just say one more thing? The, the graphic that you showed a few minutes ago about the states or the counties where there's, that they don't have masks and, and the, 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 the curve of cases going up and then down. And ours is no different, it's very telling. That, that was a very revealing statistic to me, the way that was shown, that communities that are doing nothing like, and then we, who are doing something very stringent, have the same curve line. That, to me, was a very telling thing. So I'm just pointing that, that is a very interesting thing. So the question is, as I said, is that, what is, I think what we're really trying to figure out is masks, vaccinations and testing. That, that to me is the bottom line.
And, and when we look at the curve, I think, you know, that's a simplistic way of looking at it. So we're not considering all the different factors. So I just would caution you in how you consider that. But I do agree that we should, you know, do the survey. Let's start by sending it out on the Google Doc so that we can all provide that feedback. You guys can take that feedback and then narrow it if you choose and come back to us and, and provide the recommendation. And maybe even better define the purpose and scope.
May I give my opinion on this?
Add one thing. This, this example that, that Gabe brought up with this curve from Florida, Texas and LA County, is that something that we can bring to LA County, Rebecca, in your conversations and say, how do you address this? As, as, as a health organization, how do you justifiably address your, you know, protocols against this, this specific data? They may have an answer, you know? And that's an answer I would like, because I think they should be held accountable for information like this.
I absolutely can take that to them. I'm sure it would sound a little bit like, are we comparing schools to counties, counties to counties, cities to cities, states to states? And the variables that come with that? I, I'm not sure, but I, I could definitely say to them, why was there a surge in the whole, in the whole wide world when we did all the things right? But I'm, I'm not sure what they would say, but I can take it to them and ask the question.
This is a scientific question, or this is something that medical professionals either have an answer to or not. And the data is tending to show supporting, essentially what Gabe is presenting to us, as that protocols may be better served being a personal decision than, they could be recommendations, right? They could easily be recommendations, you know, and obviously, but like I said, I don't have the answer for that. I'm not going to put words in anybody's mouth, but I would like to know if somebody can address that. Because when we're looking at the data that we have, both in our school and in our county, it, it's just, things aren't matching up. And what that's leading to is we continue to divide our city, divide our district over this issue that could be a non-issue, you know? It might wind up being a non-issue. And I think that, that at least that question needs to be answered for, for those of us that are policymakers, because we have to face this. Every meeting, we have to face this and, and, and deal with this. And we want to be, and it's not, I'm not rebuking science at all, I support science. I, I, I had COVID, I was vaccinated and I'm boosted. Fortunately, I haven't gotten Delta or Omicron, so that's a good thing. Maybe because I had, had it originally. But those, those questions should be answered to the best of their ability, thank you.
May I, I have some thoughts on, on the surveys. I'm a fan of gauging the, the opinion of the community. I mean, there are definitely some of these, some of the wording that I really don't agree with and I think does promote bias, especially that question about vaccination and enforcing it on students. I think that's very strong language that can lead to some effects in, in that regard. But I'd also like to say that we, regardless of the amount of people in the community who have spoken or the, whether it's a vocal majority or a vocal minority or silent majority, we have heard a lot from parents and we have heard almost nothing from students. And so I do believe that if we are to prioritize the creating of a survey, it should be for students rather than parents, because students are the ones ultimately who have these regulations imposed on them. And I believe that their opinions in that regard matter the most. And a lot of the, a lot of people that we hear speak often reference their students. And I was very happy to hear some of their students actually speak up tonight, because a lot of times we may not actually know what their students are saying. And just to get it directly from the students would give us a lot more information and a lot, in my opinion, better information is how to move forward, considering they're the ones who are affected by this every day and who come into school and are the ones who are apparently complaining the most. So I would definitely like to hear it from them first. I know that, that sending out the surveys at the same time is, is definitely a good idea. But if we do prioritize the creation of one, I do think it should be the student survey rather than the parent survey.
I, I, I think just, just, just to address that, I do think it should go out at the same time. Like, I do thi, I, like, I forgot who was just saying.
Dr. Bregge.
The Dr. Bregge. It should go out at the same time. And please, like, Rebecca tried to help hold me accountable on how I was drafting things, I did the same with her. But really, the more feedback, you know, into that thing, I want this board to feel comfortable that the data that we get back from this is not biased and actually reflects like the views of our community. So I think Dr. Stern, even though she had to leave, I think she could play a very important role in this, just based on the background she has.
And I think that the student survey could be a little different than the, than the adult survey.
It will be.
I mean, word it differently and so on. But also looking at their, their comfort level and so on. So I know I wasn't available when you asked me last week. But now, I, I mean, I was in another problem. And so now I think I, I am taking a step into this, so I want to get involved.
Great, love it.
Don't, don't forget that. I would like to.
And I think, I'm sorry, I think with the student survey, depending on how low, what grade you're going down to, you have to write the questions accordingly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not the same for high school as it is for elementary school.
It's a very good point.
I don't want to make the meeting any longer, but there wasn't a, I wanted to bring up tonight after hearing the speakers and I don't want to make it any longer, so. Why do I keep forgetting that?
Okay, just leave it on.
They used to have it on all the time and for some reason they changed it. Now I don't have, I never had to touch it. Now I, I'm not used to it. So I, I would like to, and this is just another thought, because I see it, we're coming to the end of the meeting and it's been a long meeting and there's still one item, I don't know, maybe we could put it off till the next meeting if, if it would be all right with everybody.
I'd like to recommend that we table that.
Okay. I, I would like to just quickly have, the idea of virtual meetings of the board. I think that we have on here that the next meeting will be virtual and the meeting after. And I'd like to hold off on perhaps the second meeting, on the March meeting. But seeing how the, the lay of the land goes with what's going on right now. And maybe we could address bringing this back to open meeting. I just, that was something that went through my mind. And I had thought about it when I saw it on the program, on the agenda earlier. And then to hear a couple of the parents speak about it, I, I thought I would bring it up. So it's just something to be thinking about that we might be able to do, not maybe at the next meeting, but the meeting after, and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
And Rochelle, if, if the county is getting set to change parameters of all the protocols sometime in the next week or so, that might inform when we can start doing that, because I do agree with you. If we're allowed to, to what extent can we have people back here?
Right.
And did, Mary, did we skip the other ones?
We did not, I'm going to recommend that we table 15A.
Okay.
Are you talking about the PRA request, right?
Yeah, it's only a discussion, so I don't think there has to be a formal vote.
My recom, yeah, so do I have consensus?
Yeah, fine.
Yes, yes, please.
So we'll table the PRA discussion?
Sorry, just one thing, just, based on what Mrs. Marcus just said, how would we go about changing the policy to actually be able to have the meetings in person? I don't want that to just.
Well, we can.
Well, we can put it on the.
We we can. So some of the school districts that have, uh, come back to, um, an in-person um, have struggled with that if the county still requires stocking indoor, indoor masks, is how do you handle groups of parents that that are coming in with no mask? And so it's 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 been, it's been, just been difficult for the board and for cabinet when you have people coming into your meeting and, you know, and of course, people are passionate about what they believe, and, you know, you can't make me do this. And so then you're in violation of the county, and you've got, you, and what's happened from superintendents um, at some of my meetings have said, like, there, we have people going at each other in the audience as well. So it's just been more of a, you know, something that we have to consider is, you know, how, you know, if everybody comes in and everybody complies, great, but if that doesn't happen, how do we handle it?
I I, I'll just say, I have a lot of faith in our community. I think if we make very clear that here, here are the rules, and if the rules are not abided by it, we're gonna go back to virtual.
Exactly.
And I think we just make it very simple, but I I do think the community has, I, to, to miss Marcus's point. I think, I think we've reached the point that we need to start to invite the community back. I would agree with you.
I agree as well.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is communication from board members. Does anybody want to start? Gabe?
I'll be really quick. I just want to say happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
President Wells.
Thank you so much.
Our community is very lucky to have you. I'm sorry you had to spend all night with us.
It's okay. My family's been waiting for hours.
I'm sorry.
Fifteen minutes, half an hour more.
I just wanted to say happy birthday and.
They're used to it now. Thank you, Gabe.
Um, I'd like to echo that, uh, happy birthday, uh, Mrs. Wells. Um, sorry that you had to to spend it here, but we we appreciate your sacrifice. Um, I'd also just like to thank Kbev for being here this long as well. Uh, and, yeah, give you a random applause for Kbev. So thank you to them for for always being here for us, and everyone, please, uh, stay safe, continue to wear your masks, get vaccinated if possible, uh, and see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Eli. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I'm just gonna make it very brief. I want to congratulate everybody for being able to stick with us tonight. I also would like to just make one brief thing. We congratulated the athletes that won the conference championships and so on. But I'd like to congratulate all the teams for their participation, for coming out and getting exercise and what have you. And I think, I think they need, whether you win or lose, it's how you play the game, and I want to congratulate all the athletes on the program. So that's my statement for tonight.
Mr. Margot?
Oh, uh, just, just happy birthday again. Um, thank you, staff, thank you, board. Eight hours, really, really long day. That's one of the reasons why we started meetings earlier, because try doing this, um, from five o'clock and then do eight hours. Um, that was fun. Um, and I I, Gabe, was it fun tonight?
Oh, totally. It would have been, it would have been more fun if you were here, but.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I'll be back for the next one. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
And Mary, open your email.
I I will do that. I'd like to thank everybody for the wonderful birthday wishes. Thank you for the beautiful flowers. It's really lovely to spend my birthday here, uh, with all of you. Uh, actually, very much appreciate that I am healthy and happy and have the, I have much, very much gratitude for where I am in my life and, uh, would just share that with all of you. So thank you very much. Thanks for sticking around. It is ten thirteen, and the meeting is now adjourned. I love doing that.